All right, I will. Are we okay? All right, I will go ahead and call to order the Planning Commission meeting for March 19th, 2019. First on our agenda is to adopt our agenda. Do we have any modifications or additions? Hearing none, I'll move that we adopt the agenda as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We will proceed accordingly. Next on our agenda is approval of the minutes. We have two meetings to discuss. Let's start with the first one for the Planning Commission meeting of February 19th, 2019. Does anybody have any adjustments?
Any adjustments, Mary Jo?
I don't think so.
Okay. I move that we approve the minutes as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next is the minutes from the Planning Commission meeting of March 12th, 2019. Does anybody have any adjustments?
One, one thing, it says would have a senior housing component. And that was not firm. When I asked about it, he just said, well, we do HUD-type buildings. But he didn't say they would definitely have a senior component. So, would they have might be better than just would have. Just under the first.
Yeah, you're talking about the, the fifth bullet point?
Yes, exactly.
Under the downtown west sketch plan?
And then what does the next one mean? Commercial success as well as rich residential, too much, too little, flexibility, et cetera? What does that mean? Is there too much? Does it mean is there too much commercial versus the residential? Or how, how does this?
I think it.
Setting it up?
I think it was speaking to like the overall conversation of whether we need to be flexible with those particular types of uses or whether or not they need to be increased or I think it was trying to figure out the, the flow of the conversation as opposed to make a decision on a particular issue.
Right. I just didn't understand what it meant. I knew that we discussed the, the possibilities for commercial extends. I just.
Yeah.
And I'm sorry. Okay.
No, um, this is, this is maybe good feedback. Just, just for us to consider. And Paul, did you do the minutes for this, this section? I, I can appreciate both your perspectives, your, and Mary Jo's in terms of, I remember the discussion where it was, we were talking about how important that this isn't just a residential development, that it's also perceived as, you know, commercial successes will, will make the overall development successful long-term. And so I can appreciate when you say things like too much or too little. In the flow of conversation, that was probably capturing, you know, we want to make sure that it's not too much residential or too much commercial or too little commercial, right? That there's a good balance. But to Mary Jo's point of view, if we come back and look at minutes at some point in the future, you know, whether it's two months from now or two years from now, it may not be as clear.
Sure.
As it could be. So, as we try to sort of capture the discussion, even though you might take shorthand while doing the minutes, sort of rounding out the thoughts as you memorialize the conversation, I think, might serve for future discussions. When this comes back, you know, it could be six months before preliminary plat comes before us and it, it may help everybody on the commission to sort of understand the essence of some talking points.
Thanks.
Is that kind of where you're going, Mary Jo?
Exactly.
All right.
I mean, I was here. If I don't understand it.
Right. And so, yeah, I think we can work on trying to articulate that a little more clearly. I still want to also put too many words of my own into it. Try to internalize what exactly was being said.
So, I guess to Mary, Mary Jo's point, you know, that bullet point could be round out a little, articulated just a little bit better in terms of capturing the essence of that talking point.
Thanks.
And Mary Jo, I think a good point on the previous bullet point that says would have a senior housing component. Yeah, I don't remember that specific commitment being made. And so, is it more of a question, like is a senior housing component being considered?
Would it have, insert the word, word it.
Yeah.
And that answers it.
Are you remembering that, Pat, if there was a commitment one way or the other?
Well, no, the intent, I believe those bullet points were the Planning Commission's kind of recommendations going forward. My, my understanding is that with this bullet point of saying it would have a senior housing component was the Planning Commission stating that they would like to see some type of a how is senior housing component part of this.
Okay.
Is, that's how I'd read that bullet point. And all of those bullet points would be kind of like your recommendations of how to make that development better.
Okay. Any other feedback for the minutes?
Oh, one other thing. Under miscellaneous, it says a PUD discussion with the city council will be rescheduled. And we could insert the date there because it was scheduled for April 8th, I believe.
April, yes, we could insert the date.
Shouldn't we? I was going to put it on my calendar and.
Yeah, well, we, we could. I can understand why we wouldn't. I mean, sometimes putting dates. But if it was agreed upon in this instance, that would be practical to link, to put a date and memorialize it in that way. All right. Any others?
I accept the minutes as corrected.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, we'll move on. Next, we have several discussion items tonight. The first one is a public hearing for the preliminary and final plat rezoning and variance for 1501 82nd Street. And if you wouldn't mind, before we start, Pat, just for those in the audience who haven't been a part of our public hearing, we'll start with a presentation by, by city staff. We'll have a brief discussion among the Planning Commission just to introduce some, some questions. And then at that point, I'll open up the public hearing. And anybody who has any questions or comments is welcome to step to the podium and just state your name and address and share your perspective or your questions. Once we're done hearing from everybody, we'll close the public hearing. There'll be more discussion among Planning Commission members and then we'll make a motion for how to proceed. So, with that, we'll start with the presentation by staff.
Chair, members of the Planning Commission, the applicant here is Bethesda Lutheran Communities. They're proposing to remove four existing buildings located on the site. The subject site is south of 82nd Street. It's adjacent to Lions Park on the east side. There's three main buildings that were built in the 1970s and they're located in a little circle. And then back in the 18, 1980s, they built a smaller building to their rear. Currently, I think there's around 40 living units that's there now. And what they're recommending or what they're proposing is 15 apartments in one-story townhomes and 33, 37-unit apartment building on the south side of the site. The project requires a variance from the maximum 36 units in a one apartment building, a rezoning in part of the site from R1 to R3, and a preliminary final plat. Bethesda acquired the site in 2013. And as I mentioned before, there's four buildings on the site and they house 41 residents. It included a list of all the comprehensive plan policies and goals in your, in your staff report and that's intent to help you flesh out the main issues of this project. I'm not going to go through them, but that's kind of what I'd like to, I kind of like to do that in my staff reports, just give you a heads up on that. The comprehensive plan 2040 guides us as medium-density residential with a density range of six to 12 units per acre. At 52 dwelling units on 4.33 acres, it does meet that density requirement of 12 units per acre. The majority of the site is zone R3 residential. And you could see there's a 150-foot strip on the east side of the property that has all the evergreen trees. That one little strip is zone R1. So, this rezoning from the R1 to R3 is just to bring the entire site into the R3 zoning district. The proposed development meets all the required billing and height setbacks by the ordinance. The one part that doesn't meet the ordinance is the number of units in the apartment building. So, we have a maximum number of units in apartment billing at 36 and they're proposing 37. And go through the variance criteria, there's four criteria for the Planning Commission and ultimately the city council to consider. The first criteria is the property owner proposing to use the property in a reasonable manner, not permitted by the ordinance. Staff's comment is the property is zone R3, which is a multifamily residential zoning district and guided medium-density residential. And as you see from the civic amount of green space, they meet all the setbacks for the billing. Just looking at that, you could tell that the site isn't overdeveloped. So, going from 37 to, going from 36 units to 37 units is not overdeveloping the site. Is the plight of the property owner due to circumstances unique to the property that have not been created by the landowner? Again, the property is zoned for apartment buildings and townhomes. And they could easily have built two apartment buildings, both under 36 units, and met the zoning requirements. But instead, what they're trying to do is be compatible with the neighborhood of single-family. So, they put a lot of more units in the townhomes, one-story townhomes to be compatible with the, the single-family. But they also need the number of units to make the project work. So, they're adding one more unit to the apartment building. Third, will the variance, if granted, alter the essential character of the area? The essential character of the neighborhood will not be honored, be altered as the majority of the site will be one-story townhomes. While the three-story apartment building will be placed farthest from 82nd Street, farthest from the single-family neighborhoods. And it would be part of, or closest to the, the park. The applicant is also preserving a significant amount of trees that will provide an immediate buffer and downplay the, the scale of the apartment building. Fourth, if a variance is granted, will the outcome be in harmony with the purpose and intent of the ordinance and consistent with the comprehensive plan? Staff's comment is the intent of eliminating the apartment building to 36 units is to make, ensure that you don't have large apartment buildings in single-family neighborhoods essentially. The one additional unit will not significantly increase the size of this proposed apartment building. In addition, as I mentioned, the, the trees will, that are being preserved will immediately help downplay the scale of the apartment building. And the design of the apartment building is aesthetically pleasing. The well-designed apartment building and the proposed landscaping is consistent with the comprehensive plan's goal of achieving appropriate transitions between different types of land uses and utilize, utilizing design standards, landscaping buffers, and encouraging high-quality design. Looking at the site plan, this is 82nd Street to the north. What they're proposing is a private road 20 feet wide that would circle around the, the property, the development. It'd be a one, one-way road. They have visitor parking dispersed throughout the, the development. As you can see, the, again, as I mentioned before, the townhomes are closer to 82nd Street. The apartment building is closest to the park. They have a internal walkway, sidewalk that walks around. There is a centrally-located rain garden that the walkway goes around. One of the things that staff would recommend is continue this walkway on the east side of the apartment building to connect to the city's sidewalk or path that goes through the trail system through the city. They have preserved a lot of the, the trees on the perimeter of the site. Again, just through trying to make sure that it's immediately buffered and screened. However, there is a number of significant trees on the site that they have to remove. There's a number of arborvitae's that are in the front that do a really good job of screening the entire site. You drive down 82nd Street, you don't even know that development's there because of those arborvitae's. They're going to be saving a, a number of those arborvitae's that will, again, help immediately screen that development. They're also going to be saving the, I think a 40 sec, 42-inch oak tree. That's closer to 82nd Street. The parking, so for the 52 housing, senior housing, they're required a total of 62 parking stalls. If it was a market rate development, they would require 104 parking stalls. The proposed development includes 37 parking spaces under the parking building, apartment building. 22 spaces are located in the townhouse garages. And there's 36 parking spaces for visitors for a total of 95 parking spaces. So, that exceeds the senior housing development requirements by 33 parking spaces. And it's only nine short of the market rate development. And the 94 total spaces does not count the 20 spaces that are located in front of each one of the tunnels, garages. Typically, we don't count those as required parking spaces though because they're in tandem. People would have to move cars in and out. That's why we didn't even count them, but that does help also with their parking use. One of the things that we didn't have as part of the packet is the tree inventory that they're removing the number of trees. And so, over the last couple of days, staff got that inventory, did the calculation in there because they can't put all the trees back on site because it's just physically impossible to have, you can't have too many trees. A good example is the, the evergreen trees that are on that east side of the property. They're so close together, they're dying from the bottom up. So, there are some distance that you should put, put trees from each other. So, you can't physically locate all the, all the trees that are required to be back on that site. So, what they have to do is pay $101,000 into the tree fund. And I will let them talk about it. I think they may have a, a solution to that, but I'll let the applicant discuss that. The elevation of the townhomes, the intent of the, of the architect in designing these is to have them look, each unit look a little different, but you didn't want them to be too drastic that they would become an hyssore. So, basically what they tried to do is have them be similar, but a little different from each other. They use four-sided architecture on all of these. And what that means is they're using quality materials on all four sides of the building. It's cement fiberboard siding or, or shakes. And then they also have windows on all side of the buildings. For the apartment building, again, they're, what they're trying to do is create a apartment building in the tunnels to be similar but not identical to each other. So, again, to create one cohesive neighborhood. And again, they're using quality materials, fiber cement siding on the majority of it. The one thing that they do indicate is on some of the areas, they show CMU or masonry. And what staff would recommend or encourage is to use the brick siding in the front and then the sides. And if you look down here on the, where the, you have the garage going underneath the ground, that that area would be used for the CMU, which is the cement or concrete modifying units. I think that's what it stands for. So, in conclusion, the proposed development is a significant improvement over the existing housing. The apartment buildings and the townhomes are well-designed with quality materials. The one-story townhomes near 82nd Street blends in with the existing neighborhood. And the, putting a three-story apartment building close to the open house is consistent with the comprehensive plan's goal of placing high-density near, near open space. The proposed development not only provides an additional dwelling units within walkiness of the downtown, but also adds a variety of housing in Victoria that there is limited supply of for seniors. Staff has recommended approval with the conditions listed in the staff report. With that, I'll take any questions.
Thank you. Any initial comments or questions?
If you don't mind, I'll start. Being a resident of the neighborhood for 30 years, I, I don't, first off, I don't see anything wrong with this plan at all. Actually, I love it. I've been up to those buildings. I've volunteered with the Lions through there and those buildings have lived their life, definitely. It's time for a new project up there. Anything that's progressive like this is more accommodating, more functional, is going to last longer and can help the people in the community. I'm all for it to begin with. So, that being said, it's great presentation from what I can tell on the front, so. But the one reason, or one problem I have is right away with the subject under the request for Planning Commission, where you're really asking for three pieces of action from us tonight and that doesn't always work because there might be one part that doesn't work that may need to be revisited and two parts that seem okay. So, you're looking for a preliminary final plat and then a variance and then a rezoning. And that, that can be tough to do because there's things I think I need to find out more about before I can approve at least two of them. And beginning with the preliminary final plat, I don't really have a problem, like I said, with the, the project itself. It looks great and being in construction all my life, this is a quality product and the use and the land use is proper with the position in the buildings. The variance is minimal in itself too, but the, the rezoning I have an issue with because that buffer strip, that 50-foot buffer strip of those trees was put into an R1 to make it stay an R1 with the houses on the backside. When we shift it to a separate zone, R3, we start adding, if there was to be development in that strip, we start adding more ground coverage. We go from a 30% to a 60 to 75 possibility. And with 15 feet between the building and 15 feet off the lot line, 10 feet off the lot line, that's a lot of building on the backside of a residence. If it's at 30%, we're not going to get a bunch of townhomes on the back there or another apartment building 15 years from now. That strip was put in there for that width and with those trees, like I said, for a buffer. And I, I'd rather see that stay that way for that reason, for those residents that have houses there now. So, that, that's my thoughts on, on that. I don't know if you want me to continue with my, all my thoughts or if you guys want to hedge in on the variance portion of it or if there's any comments on that. As far as the, I'm sorry, that, that rezoning portion.
So, I want to make, I just want to make sure I understand your, your point of view on that. So, the, in essence, that, that strip as it's proposed by converting it to R3, it, am I understanding right that it's then, it's now treating it as all part of a common site? So, when we say this, the, the side yard setbacks that are being met, for example, it's, it's now from the ultimate edge of the site. It's not from the, from the edge that was formerly the boundary between the R1 and the R3?
Right. It would be under the new property lines. But just, I just want to point out that there is a buffer requirement of 25 feet from residential R1 to the R3 zoning districts. So, that 25 feet of that 50 feet has to be a buffer from here on out.
And that would be, that'd be the 25-foot setback anyway from the front to the rear of a townhome, from property line anyway. So, that's going to be there regardless if we call it a buffer or a setback. But it's, it's the bulking, the 15-foot separation of the buildings that, that more worries me, if anything, and the coverage that's available through an R3. The, the impervious surface coverage can fluctuate anywhere from 60% to 75, depending what type of structure it is and exactly what zone it's going to be in.
So, like in the, in the current proposal, am I understanding that based on the ultimate boundary of, of the site, the 25 feet is the distance between the property line and the, the, the road? The street which runs in the north-south direction over to the right of the site? And is that part of your concern then, Todd, that that street is now within the, yeah, we're talking about that street there, you know?
I'm not so.
Saying that that's a 25-foot setback and then the hard coverage is occurring in that, in that zone?
I'm, I'm not so much worried about the hard coverage for the road because the road would be allowed in an R1 regardless. It's the fact that they technically could shift those buildings to that buffer, 50-foot buffer strip if it became an R3. And you could have the bulking of those buildings as opposed to single individual homes, which the R1 requires. So, you're changing the dynamic of that 50-foot buffer, turning it from an R1 to an R3 as far as development.
So, even though, even though we'd be approving a, a preliminary and final plat tonight with the buildings in a given configuration, you're concerned about long-term, 30 years from now, another development come in and have a different idea about where buildings are positioned on the site?
Absolutely. And, and with intent that the fact that that buffer was put there for that reason is to maintain that 50-foot separation from R1 to the existing R3, which is why it's there.
Yeah.
And, and to lose that is, goes back and takes away what another council and Planning Commission and staff had approved for that reason.
Well, I'll say that, like that aspect of the discussion I think is important and maybe something that isn't highlighted in, you know, in the summary of the long-term comprehensive plan. We, we did talk about, you know, compatibility of, of adjacent uses, right? And so, if, I think there's some merit to what you're saying, Todd, in terms of, in the past, we've had hesitation around jumping between zoning. You know, putting a R1 next to an R3 or an R2 next to an R4, trying to create some transitional area to, to get past that potential for incompatibility. And I don't know the history, but it sounds like, it sounds like you do in terms of the, the original intent of that, of that 50-foot strip.
I, I won't say where the source came from because I don't know if it's factual, but within the neighbors, I have neighbors that have lived there for 50 and 60 years. And they've been very involved in the government up to probably 20 years ago. And, um, it was, that's exactly what your point was, is that, uh, we've had the same concerns with jumping, hopscotching zoning, zoning. And if this was three separate issues tonight, we wouldn't be talking about this during the preliminary final plat process of this. This is something that could be addressed at a later date and still be moving forward with the, with the preliminary at this time and final.
Yeah, so, um, having, having said that, I'm curious if is converting that R1, that strip of R1 to R3 essential for the project to go forward, meaning, I'm not sure exactly where the spacing comes out, but, you know, could the roadway and some of the site configuration as presented still be accomplished even without converting that strip of land to R3?
Um, one thing you may wanna do is hear from the developers, um, the property owners, before you get into the discussion of
Yeah.
of the pros and cons of the, the development.
Sure. We'll get there. Do you have some other thoughts?
Yeah, I do, actually, and the, I'm a little confused on our zoning, R3 and R4. Our current ordinance says an R3 is four to ten units per acre. This is twelve. That's an R4. So I don't know how that slipped through the cracks, because if you do the math on the acreage, um, and the number of residents, it comes out to an R, R4. Twelve. Anything ten to twenty-four is an R4.
Um, where do you see that in the zoning ordinance?
In zoning ordinance, correct.
Typically zoning ordinances, they have the, the type of use in the floor area here.
Under the residential, R1, two, three, four.
Yeah, R3 has a principal use, townhomes, multifamily dwellings. Then they have the bulk regulations, multifamily.
Doesn't it list how many per acre?
Well, they usually use, list that in the comprehensive plan. And I use the comprehensive plan, the twenty-forty comprehensive plan, and it's, let's see, in the staff report, four to twelve units per acre. And then what I have on the map in front of you is the twenty-forty comprehensive plan. And in that comprehensive plan, that has that fifty-foot strip guided for a medium-density residential. So if you keep it at R1, then it's inconsistent with the comp plan, which is against state law.
Yeah, then that's where I think that was neglected as thought, though. I, I don't think anyone knew that it was in there for a reason, and it was never brought up, as of course, it was just assumed it would become, because all the other property was, that was attached to that property.
And the twenty-forty comp plan has this guided as medium-density residential from six to twelve units per acre. And I don't see in the zoning ordinance where it states the units per acre.
That's where I got the numbers from.
Do you know what section it is?
Uh, it's, it's in the zoning under the R1 through R4 section. Four to ten, okay.
So the, again, I see which, now I see where you have it in the zoning district, R3. It's guided for density of four to ten units per acre.
Correct.
But again, so that's one of the things that we need to, supposed to change, is to bring our zoning ordinance consistent with our comp plan, in which we'll be doing over the next, hopefully, six, twelve months. So in our comp plan, it's got, the density is four to six to twelve units per acre.
Well, it's hard to make a decision on two different, uh, things that are happening than, um, once again, if we had this on a separate ballot, we might not be here, and it could be discussed or changed. I don't know where to go for that. That's information provided in our, under our zoning ordinance, and that's how we govern as a planning commission, so. With, with the comprehensive mind, or plan generally in mind, but our zoning ordinance is our ordinance to follow. And our comprehensive plan is a guide, as we've said several, many times. I guess I'm a little disappointed in that these two things weren't hashed out maybe prior to this, or, um, wasn't brought up by, at some point other than tonight.
Okay, so there's a variety of ways we can reconcile this, and I, we can come back and, and talk about sort of the approach. Let's move on with the conversation, though, and talk about some other aspects. So, um, did you have some other comments that you initially wanted to share with regard to the, the overall configuration of the site, the layout of the development? Or certainly others have some thoughts and, um, comments they wanna weigh in on?
I just have a quick question about the functionality. So with a senior housing site, I'm curious about where staff is, and if there are, um, medical staff there, and where they're located, and just kind of the logistics of that.
Yeah.
They're more in the apartment, or, yeah.
So I, I think we'll have a chance to, um, have a conversation with developer here, and we can ask some of those questions. I, I had a question for, for city staff, um, with regard to site access. Um, first, I, I appreciate the perspective of, you know, linking pedestrian access to the trail to the south. I think that, that's a wise suggestion. I can't remember if that's already in, in some of the, um, conditions. I would support that. Also, I was thinking at the north edge of the site, you know, there's the, there's the sidewalk along each of the drives, and they sort of come to a, come to an end. And I know that there's not an existing sidewalk along the street today, but I'm wondering if there's long-term plans to add sidewalks along the streets? Or, you know, is part of the future development of the, of the, the park? And so if there is, is there a missed opportunity to, um, not extend those sidewalks and connect each other along the street front, at least with regard to this site? Understanding there may be potential, if there's potential of sidewalks planned for the remaining adjacent areas?
We don't have plans for a, adding more sidewalks on eighty-second street. However, connecting the sidewalks, uh, may be wise for the property owner, just to do it themselves. Uh, just, again, to create a circular path for the residents, even though we might not have plans. And that's one of the reasons why we were recommending the connection from the site to the trail on the south side, um, because otherwise, there's no connection between the sidewalks and the rest of the city. Because, again, we don't have any plans for sidewalks on eighty-second street. So that's why the connection to the trail to the south was important to us.
And is there a street, is there street parking along that edge, along eighty-second street?
I believe there's parking on both sides of eighty-second street, except for when there is an event, then they post it for, uh, no parking on one side.
But I guess that would be one additional reason why it would be advantageous to continue extending those sidewalks to connect not only for internal site pedestrian access, but, um, I think we're coming up a little bit short on the onsite parking. I remember the, the summary, so potential overfull parking along the street, having access to a sidewalk to gain access to the site. It'll, it, it makes sense to me to, to think about it in that way. Anybody else in observations or questions?
A question I have, Pat, is the fee ownership gonna stay the same? Is this, is it still gonna be the primary user of this property?
Yes. So it's, um, they're gonna be requesting TIF, and as part of that, they have to set up a, a limited partnership. So it's gonna be owned by Bethesda, but it's under a different umbrella type thing.
Thank you.
I'm curious where the, this is something I'm sure they're making answer, but where the displaced residents go during construction. Just curious.
So they've already, um, put the residents in, in other housing. Um, they gave them the opportunity to move back, but I think the, from my understanding with talking to the applicants, that they've become accustomed to where they're living now, and most likely won't be moving back. But they can probably give you a more detailed answer.
Knowing some of the amenities will be nice to know, too, just for future residents.
Um, couple other site observations that might be worth considering. You know, with the internal through-street, uh, and the addition, the existing residential homes to the, to the east, um, the trash enclosure is one thing that I think, um, I can appreciate there's been some attention given to that in terms of creating an enclosure. Um, it looks like, at least on the colored plan, some acknowledgement of adding some, um, greenery around it. I just think it, it's important to, um, give it your best shot in terms of screening that from the existing neighbors. Just so that's not a, a new addition in their, in terms of their backyard view, um, from what was once there, once upon a time. Um, but then also another thing that I think cities encountered is, you know, the whole dealing with headlights. And so as you can imagine, coming down this one way and turning, I think those, those two existing homes towards the south end of the residential development are gonna be faced with potential headlights in their, in their backyards and, um, back windows that may, they may not have had to deal with in the past. And so additional screening, um, on that access, um, I think would be wise, just from a conflict and light overspill into the residential would be a, a good idea.
Jeff, um, excuse me, you're talking about the houses to the east here.
Yeah, houses off to the right.
Along this bend here.
Yeah, um, one of the things you're not seeing on this colored plan is, um, you know, there's a, there's a home right on access, you know, that, the blue car on the drive, you know, its headlights are either hitting the trash enclosure, or it's going into the, into the backyard of the house that's right on access there, and there's actually two of them, I think would be affected as you round the corner. And so we've, we've heard complaints about that in the past, when roads or highways are sort of on access to, to homes. And it's just an opportunity with development. It's just a matter of screening, um, in terms of, sometimes we go so far as require a buffer
Burmese.
and Burmese. On, on other, um, large developments. But in this case, I think the amount of traffic is gonna potentially pick up, and it's not a condition that existed today. So putting some additional screening with, um, a variety of trees, not only around the trash enclosure, but also, um, to avoid as, as cars turn that corner, um, it's not a conflict.
And, and the trash enclosure really has three things going against it, uh, as far as location goes, not just the, the lights coming by it, but, uh, a smell out of it, or when the pickup hits on it. Uh, that's right in someone's backyard, right there, as far as location goes, where to the west and south, it's all park. Uh, would affect nobody, except for the residents onsite. Um, I don't know where the trash location is now, but it being a commercial property, at, uh, there's two of them in town, three of them in town here that aren't supposed to get serviced till seven, and they're, they're at five-thirty, quarter to six in the morning. So they don't play by the rules when they do a commercial pickup. So maybe even a better location for that could be configured. Um, I know it's tough, because the entrance to the parking garage over here makes it less desirable to have it over here, but.
How is the size of the trash enclosure determined?
What, they, typically, the tenants determine the, the, their need, and then build the trash enclosure based on that need.
Is there a trash enclosure within the apartment as well?
Um, they didn't indicate that in the narrative. Um, you can ask the, the applicant, though.
Seems small for that many units.
Doesn't seem practical either. If you think of, quote, senior housing, there should be provision inside there, at least, to not have to walk outside or drive outside, in the winter especially.
Pat, can you define the definition of what the buffer would look like in this application? The elevation, density of the greenery. Maybe we talked about it in the past. Can you refresh your memory on that?
Yeah, so one of the things I was gonna mention is, because of the existing evergreens and the, the desire to keep as many of the evergreens as possible, they can't really build a berm in that buffer area, and so that's, it's gonna be relatively flat. Um, but they've tried to put as much landscaping in there to augment the existing trees. So they're gonna be planting a lot of the, um, evergreen shrubs, because of the, the existing trees are dying from the bottom up. We believe that by thinning out some of those existing evergreen trees, that the ones that are remaining will actually thrive and do better. But the, they're, with the existing trees and the shrubs, and adding a, maybe a handful more, they would, you know, basically landscape the entire buffer again.
Thank you.
And one other comment I had, too, was from a, more of a building construction end of it, code. Is the handicap parking is located across the drive lane from the front entrance. Uh, the code basically prohibits that, or dis- encourages it, because now that handicap person has to come through when other vehicles are coming through, as opposed to the green space on the left of the main entrance, which could be niched out with three spots, with an access aisle and a ramp, and a separate sidewalk to that sidewalk. That would be, um, more desirable and would fit the prescription of chapter thirteen forty-one a lot better than, uh, having it across an aisle, a mobile aisle. Um, I, I'll leave that up to discretion of the building official, obviously, but I'd like to suggest it now, because it, it seems to be a part of our building within Victoria that we seem to fail quite a bit a lot on, and I have a discussion with people about this. And I'd like to bring it up every time I see it. This is supposed to be for elderly. Let's make it accessible for elderly, and not have them walk across a traffic lane, onsite traffic lane.
That would make sense with emergency vehicles as well. Just not crossing traffic, not stopping the flow of traffic, that being the location where they would potentially be located.
Yeah, I think both are good points. Pat, I, when you were talking through the staff report, um, reminded me of something that I didn't have time to look up, but, in our ordinances, we have, uh, I thought we had design standards for multifamily developments. And, um, I think that, that would apply in this instance, right, true? And so, um, I think in those, those requirements, they talk about, um, types of materials and their acceptability, um, also the, you know, certain percentages, I think, of, of a, of a certain finish. And I'm trying not to confuse them with the, with the central business district standards, that is maybe even a little bit more prescriptive. But since I didn't look at specifically the multifamily requirements, can I assume that, that you have, and that the current proposal complies with those?
Well, yeah, the cement fiber siding is one of the higher-quality building material, materials you can have. Um, so that would meet the, those standards.
And did, and the, I'm trying to remember if our standards touch on some of the things you talked about in terms of, um, breaking up the massing and, you know, um, in terms of percentage of the overall elevation being of, of the same material, for example, and, and those types of things.
Right. So there's the facade movement. Right, so there's the facade movement in and out meets that requirement. Breaking up the massing.
Is there any prescriptive language for the CMU units as to being a textured unit, a raised unit as opposed to a plain flock, flat CMU unit exposed? Because I'm pretty sure the central business district, we had that come up once where we had a builder change his product based on that.
I'd have to look.
Okay, I didn't mean to put you on the spot with that right now, it's just, it comes to mind that that's what we're looking for is a. Upgraded CMU unit and it doesn't oppose, or it doesn't look like there's going to be many of them exposed anyway at the garage entrance, maybe the face of the garage.
Yeah, I guess if. Rather than putting you on the spot, Pat, to answer those detailed questions, I think if we get to the point where we're recommending moving forward, I would likely. Prefer that we add a condition that. You know, pending confirmation that the. Exterior finishes comply with the multifamily standards in, in the ordinances.
So I could just read it, it's, it's only handful of things here. Filing materials or equivalent materials are acceptable, brick, stone, wood, stucco, recycled grades vinyl, side fiber cement board, no garage tent or accessory building. And that's it. Prohibited materials in all districts include face materials which rapidly deteriorate, building comprised exclusively of metal and sheet metal. And those are the residential performance standards.
I'm glad you said that because I, I was, I was confusing that with some of the central business district, which, you know, limits. Certain percentage of the elevation being of a single material and needing to be broken up by others and so, thanks for checking on that. Any other thoughts before we open up for discussion?
I have one question. They said that they would be making provisions for, in a sense, development, developmentally challenged residents. Are there enough handicap spaces if they are going, how, how many apartments are they going to have for the developmentally handicapped? Are there enough spaces for them?
Yeah, in short, you have to have one for every twenty-five. Basically for, from chapter thirteen forty-one, so you don't technically only have to have two. They could provide more in the parking garage, obviously, if they chose to, but they do not have to provide them down in there, but. But that would be reviewed at, at that time by the building official also, so that gets caught on that end of the.
Okay, thank you. So many senior housing projects that drive by have completely empty parking lots, so. I'll say many seniors just don't drive.
They don't, I know. I was thinking of the other, the non seniors, the developmentally handicapped. Maybe they don't have licenses, that could be probably a good thing, actually.
I can answer a question just from my own education on the TIF. Bethesda, is that a taxable or non taxable entity? And if the, do they pay real estate taxes as I believe at this time and will they moving forward involve the TIF?
Right now, they're not, they're tax exempt, so they're not paying any real estate taxes.
How does the TIF benefit us, is that even something we discuss?
Well, a lot of times the TIF makes the project work, essentially. You can, it's not something that the planning commission typically discusses. But you can always ask questions and.
Moving on, that's answered my question, I just couldn't figure out the tie-in with the TIF, the non taxable entity and, but I understand now.
One of the things that we'll do during the review is our Northland Securities, our financial consultants, looks at their pro forma, what their, you know, the, the sources and uses and make sure that the TIF is needed. And they make that statement to the city council, and I think the April twenty-second is the public hearing.
Excellent, thank you.
All right, I'm going to go ahead and open up for the public hearing. So we'd love to hear your perspective or any comments or questions that you have, we just ask that you step to the podium and state your name and address and share your thoughts. And it's tough, somebody always has to go first, but maybe to start, it sounds like the developers here today.
Yeah, did you want the developers to come up?
That'd be a great starting point.
We've heard a lot of questions, I think we could help.
Yeah, and that's, that's exactly how the process works well, so I think some of us had specific questions, but we also, you, you heard some of the things that we talked about, so it'd be great if you, if you came up and joined us and, and shared some thoughts.
The four of us would come up or?
Yeah, you can all come up together, we just asked that you speak in the mic because we are streaming and I'm sure we've got a, a huge audience at home that's, that's listening and. But it's also for the record for future reference, so if you wouldn't mind taking turns as you speak, speaking into the mic.
Sure, can I interrupt you guys before you speak, I just want to let the planning commission know, it's important to let them know is that we did hold an open house last month before the planning commission meeting. And there's a number of residents and maybe that's not, maybe that's why they're not here tonight, that did show up and they, the applicants here walked through the, the development plans. And one of the biggest concerns was off-street parking because there's a number of off-street parking on eighty-second street gets pretty tight, especially on those events. And that's one of the reasons why staff encouraged them to put in more off-street parking, just to alleviate some of the neighbors' concerns. But to me, I think that was probably their biggest concern.
Appreciate that.
Okay, so my name is, my name's Tom Campbell. I, I'm an owners representative for Bethesda Lutheran Communities. My address is, home address one two five nine zero West Lakeland Drive in the city of New Berlin, Wisconsin. So it was a beautiful, beautiful drive today. So I'm gonna, I'm just going to start real quick as to terms of what this development is, because I think it's really important that you understand. This initiative was, so how, you know, we are moving, in the process of moving the people we serve, persons with intellectually, developmentally disabled individuals. Offsite into other group homes, I can have Monica talk more about that. We are repurposing this development and we are repurposing it into fifty-two units, which we feel complies with a comprehensive plan. For adults fifty-five years and older, it is independent living, so there's no medical requirements or services that would be provided on the site. If that's required, they would have to go offsite to get that or provide, or coordinate that themselves with themselves. So up to twenty-five percent of those units are going to be targeting persons with disabilities. So, so that's Bethesda's mission, that's their ministry and that's what is going to be a really critical component to this development as well. While, Pat, you are correct on that, the people that live there now may not move back, maybe they will. But there'll be other individuals that will bring in to meet that twenty-five percent. So that's really critical, that's, that's really important. Another critical aspect of it is this is a faith-based community, it's a Christian-based senior housing development with the persons with disabilities component to it. So we feel that's very, that's, that's in Bethesda's DNA, both of those attributes. And it's very important that we, we lead off with that. So with saying that, I'm going to pass it to Monica, she is, she's really, she lives and breathes in this community, she's operated that facility for much more than when Bethesda acquired it. We, we acquired Monica with the acquisition, so, so I'm going to pass it over to her because she's much more articulate and eloquent than I am.
Good evening, my name is Monica Schmidt, I'm the regional director for operations for Bethesda here in Minnesota. And Bethesda acquired my old company, which was Community Living Incorporated, which opened in nineteen seventy-one. Built those buildings specifically for that purpose, providing housing for people with intellectual and developmental disabilities. At that time, it was considered state of the art. At that time, people were being housed in public, large public institutions. And as services have evolved, these are not the types of services that young people with disabilities desire any longer. People living in these homes lived in double occupancy bedrooms, you know, it wasn't a lot of privacy. So there were, there were eleven or twelve people living in the larger buildings and then six living in the, the building in the back. So I actually hail from Victoria, my mother and my brother still live here. I started working for Community Living in nineteen seventy-five, so I've known, known many of these individuals since the time that they moved in. And we're very excited about the initiative that Bethesda is undertaking here and the investment they've made in continuing to provide supports for people with disabilities. We have purchased beautiful homes out in the community, one of them is in Victoria, out on Freiburg Court. And three or four individuals are living in those homes and as they're opening, it's a beautiful thing, people are very happy and. And as to whether or not any of them will come back to this development, I think initially when they first heard about the changes, the closure of those facilities, something they had known basically their entire adult life. You know, there was some reassurance in thinking, well, maybe I can come back. As was alluded to by Pat, they, people are very happy in their new homes and, and I suspect that that may not be the case. But there are many people with intellectual and developmental disabilities that are looking for community integrated housing. And I'm excited that we're going to continue our mission back on the campus. Speaking Laura, to the services. And to the driving issue, Mary Jo, the, the. The services that would be potentially provided to people living in these environments are probably, could be in the form of staff support that comes and maybe helps them prepare meals or helps them with their medical appointments or. You know, that, that type of support, not likely to be twenty-four seven, although it could be if someone, there are some new types of residential supports that are being developed. And Bethesda is particularly, we, we've received a grant from the Minnesota Department of Human Services to explore this. And they're more like roommate options, so, you know, I or my, my husband and I might live in a, in a unit and then we support a single person with disabilities in our home. And, and you see those configurations in all kinds of ways, you know, in all kinds of different families. So it might be a single person or a couple or a family unit, however that family unit is defined. And in this new concept, they're taking in a single person with disabilities, so not, not bringing in three or four people like in the old adult foster care model or in the group home model, but. So it's, it's potential that you could have a, a person living in these housing units that's caring for another, you know, that's providing some support to that person with disabilities. Or it's potential that a, a provider is coming in and providing some supports, like I, like I explained, in the form of, you know, helping them set up their meds or balance their checkbook or make their meals or whatever. Not a lot of people with disabilities, develop, intellectual and developmental disabilities historically have driven. More and more, the way supports and services have really improved and the kind of support that people are getting now, you are seeing more and more young people with developmental disabilities. They have the opportunity every two years to take an assessment to determine whether they can drive or not and if they pass that assessment, they can pursue driver's education. And, and potentially, you know, operate a vehicle. And certainly people, persons with physical disabilities, you know, sometimes, so certainly the consideration for enough handicap parking is, is a very valid one. Trying to think, what were the other questions about that related to more of the supports and services, did I cover everything or?
Amenities, but I think maybe that was covered, right?
Yeah, the, well, and I'm sure that the, the developers and engineers can speak more astutely of this than I can, but it's all universal design, so. People with, you know, physical disabilities would be able to live in, in any of the units, there's going to be a lot of smart home technology employed for, you know, it could be used by anyone living, whether it's a senior or, or a person with disabilities, so. So there will be a lot of, and I'll let them speak more to the construction amenities, but, but there definitely will be advantages for people living in the units. The way they're being constructed and the way they'll be outfitted, so. Any other questions as it relates to?
The twenty-five percent are geared towards disabled, the other seventy-five percent is open to more traditional housing situations?
Yes.
And as, there's a big movement in our community that there was a group called Victoria for a Lifetime, they're looking for affordable housing and a place to go when the downsides is, how would somebody get into this facility if they wanted to?
A person with disabilities or?
Without.
Without disabilities, in terms of what, tell me a little bit more about your question.
Our community is full of large two-story homes and a lot of very mature people. Mature people wanting to gather large two-story homes, wanting to do more retirement type settings. We don't have enough of that inventory in our community. With those people, how would those parties get into your facility, is that even possible?
Yeah, yeah.
Yep, no, that's, you can.
Yeah, that's a, that's a really good question, actually you're teeing that up very well for us. So we are going to establish a website, a splash page for an update. As Pat mentioned, we've had one, we've had a neighborhood meeting recently, we've had one a year ago with all the neighbors as well, who are in that same situation. There, there'll be information on that website and we, we will publish that, we have a mailing list that we've established. So these are, these are open for adults fifty-five years and older, so it's, so it is age restricted. And certainly open to the community, one question a neighbor asked us was, does, does the city of Victoria get first dibs on this? So, and I think, Pat, what was the answer, I forgot exactly what that?
I just mentioned that once it goes to the city council, that the news, local newspapers, especially the Gazette, will publish pretty much every word we say. So everybody in Victoria will get first advertisements, basically, and first shot of contacting the developer.
Yeah, and you, and you bring up a good point because that's part of the reason we did the villas. So Pat mentioned and if, you know, I'm, I'm a for-profit developer, I'm working in a consultant capacity for the nonprofit. I would put two thirty-six unit buildings on that site, that's what I would ask for, for a variance and to, to go forward. I think that makes the most sense from an economic standpoint, but Bethesda really wants to, wants to create more of those villa types. So for, for residents that you just mentioned, they can actually move into these villas, which are very, the look and feel is single-family residence. And that's, so it's perfect for, for that type of market and we're feeling we meet it, it's a great transition from a single-family neighborhood, you know, to, to the, you know, to the, to the apartment home building in the back. So, so I think that's a critical part to the component, which kind of plays into your question in terms of that buffer, right?
Stay on the subject of the seniors.
Yep, yep, sure.
How many of these units in the apartment building, thirty-seven units are going to be fully accessible units?
Well, they're all going to be universal designed, by, by definition, that's all, they're all going to be accessible.
And there'll be an A, there'll all be A units where they can be adapted to be fully accessible.
Yes, I mean, that is our goal, is we're not going to pigeonhole any one individual into a certain unit, so, like a traditional, so it's going to be universal design with technology. We're going to use smart home technology as well and integrate that in there. Yep.
Smart home technology.
Yep.
That gets lost on a lot of seniors.
Yeah, well, this will more than comply with any, with the ADA accessibility, so of course, yeah, no, it's a good, good question, really good question. So, so with having said that, yeah, so those villas are really critical and we feel it's very, it's very important and that's what was kind of put forth to the neighbors as well as what we're going to do. So that buffer area, that fifty-foot buffer area is really, really important. And Todd, to answer your concern, your concern more future, in terms of what's going to happen after Bethesda's gone if it gets redeveloped. And I think we would, we would be open to having some sort of deed restriction applied to that to protect your, protect your, your thought process there. I think that's a reasonable request and that's something that Bethesda certainly would entertain.
I might be in the minority on that, it was just my thought when I reviewed this.
Yep, yep, no, that's, that's a fair thought because you, you know, you, you know, twenty, thirty, forty, fifty years from now, that's, that's, you know, that could come up, so. Okay, there's some other questions that, that were handed down, I'd really like Kevin Tepin, our civil engineer, to, to address, so go ahead.
Good evening Chair, members of the commission, I want to first thank staff for their help through this process and it's been very interesting and eye-opening tonight to hear all your comments. Again, as Tom said, my name's Kevin Tepin, I'm with Civil Site out of St. Louis Park, we're the engineers, landscape architects and surveyors on the project. And so if I can just take a couple. on the project. And so if I can just take a couple of minutes, I jotted down some notes as I was listening to some of your concerns and comments. And I'd just like to try to address them the best that I can. Um, and if you have questions about it, please, um, let me know. So, um, one of the questions that the commission had was talking about the, uh, staff's recommendation of having the trail or sidewalk go from the multifamily building down to the park. Um, we did hear that, but because this is universal design, we have some great challenges. And to do that would require stairs. There is a concern about safety because of the type of, um, residents that are here. So that's why you haven't seen it on our plan as of yet. Um, the second thing that we heard, um, was kind of talking about the trash enclosure location and how to, uh, does the trash get out there? So, um, it's my understanding there is a trash chute in the building and that staff actually takes what's collected, um, from the trash chute and brings it out to the trash enclosure. So that addresses how that happens. It doesn't address the location, but at least you know how that, that works.
So with that thought right there, as long as we're on that picture, so to get that trash out of the basement where the parking is, because that's where the trash chute ends up, they hit the wheel it all the way around, a large, loud, rolling dumpster all the way around the exit and entrance of the parking garage, through the front, across the front of the building, and drag it across to that dumpster. That kind of answers one question we had earlier.
Trash chute's on the first floor. It won't go all the way down.
Garbage collection in the first floor?
It'll be on the first floor in the utility closet. And then just out the front door.
Okay. I'll have to believe you. I haven't seen the plan, so I'll have to believe you.
Okay. Um, the next concern that we heard was about headlights to the east. Um, we definitely think additional landscaping and screening can go ahead and help address that concern because that is definitely a valid concern. Um, and I think we can go ahead and update our plans accordingly to accommodate the existing neighbors so that is not an issue. Um, and then the last thing that I wanted to address was, um, kind of the landscape that Pat started with in the beginning. So the requirement for the replacement, um, because this is a redevelopment of the property, um, the existing tree ordinance and tree replacement code is really generally written for new development, um, where properties that really haven't been touched, not for properties that have been in a redevelopment situation. So and sometimes when you have a redevelopment, especially something like this that has not been overly developed, you have a lot of existing vegetation and it becomes problematic to actually make it fit physically. Um, we, to put that amount of landscape and trees onto the property, really, I mean, you could do it, but it wouldn't be healthy for the vegetation. It wouldn't be, um, a nice environment, I would say, to be in. And also would be detrimental or a hindrance for how their operations are going to occur. So with that, um, Tom has, uh, some ideas that he'd like to run past you as far as how we might be able to accommodate some of the concerns to, um, potentially get to, uh, an agreement, I guess you'd say?
Sure.
Do you have a bug on the landscape?
Yes.
Yep. So, um, so the thought process would be, um, so Pat said a hundred and one thousand dollars was the, was the, um, the fee if we didn't replace any of the trees. Um, part of what we heard tonight from you was the screening, um, which I think were, was very relevant points in terms of, uh, car headlights. Um, so, um, what, we've, we feel it's going to be extremely difficult to add any additional trees to that site. Um, however, um, from a screening perspective, um, I think, uh, I think we can invest up to another additional twenty-five thousand dollars, um, for, uh, for screening, um, on that site. And in addition to that, um, pay, pay the fee of, of twenty-five thousand dollars to the city of Victoria. Um, just from a financial perspective, this development, um, this, obviously we're nonprofit, we are financially challenged. So, um, so we're trying to do everything in our power, including applying for TIF, um, to get us, to get us to where this could be financially feasible. Um, so the hundred and one thousand dollars would create a financial hardship, uh, and I, to the, to the development. Um, so we respectfully request, I guess, that idea. And I know this is the first time that, um, Pat is, is hearing this, but we think, um, we think that might be a, an unamenable solution, um, and make the, make the development work, um, overall. So.
I got, get the rest of it.
So I'm Mike Rullard. I'm Senior Director of Real Estate with Bethesda. Um, I guess to add to what Tom said, this will be a tax-paying, um, site though. So we're tax-exempt right now. When we go forward into the multifamily development, then it will become a taxable site. So there'll be additional revenue to the city that way. Um, on the sidewalk, I know Kevin talked to most of that to the front. Um, that was a, that was a cost concern, but we also want to be able to keep the trees in the front. So if, there is no sidewalk currently on Eighty-Second Street, as we talked about before. Um, so with keeping the trees, it would be hard to kind of make that look like a city sidewalk. Uh, so that was one concern. Uh, as far as parking with the ADA amount, there are also four ADA parking stalls in the garage, uh, for the apartment building. So if somebody is, is disabled, they're able to get on the elevator from the underground parking up to their apartments. Uh, the trash enclosure, it'll be a similar material to the apartment building. So aesthetically for the neighbors, it's going to look a lot like, like the apartment building is. It's not just going to be a, a chain link enclosure. Uh, the CMU type, uh, mostly on the parking garage side is going to be upgraded. Uh, that is part of our plan. So it's not just going to be a, a plain CMU brick. It'll be a, a nice-looking brick. Um, and then our intent is to do a CSM so this would all become one lot. As far as the zoning from whether it's R-three or R-four, it'd be one lot versus the main lot being R-three and the little side lot being R-one. It'll become one piece of property. So I think that was all the questions.
Thank you.
Um, let's go back to the trash container. Um, what type of slope is there, as you start to enter the ramp down to the underground parking, what type of slope is presented there as far as grade goes to you? Just a quick number off mine?
Around five percent.
Five percent. So it'd be easy enough for a garbage truck to back up and wheel it, a dumpster off if it was on the park side there, uh, just on the south side of those big elm trees or whatever trees those are, to wheel a container in there. Um, with no interference with the neighbors, the, the screening would be minimal. Then you wouldn't have to throw another twenty-five thousand dollars of screening at the garbage then. Uh, it could be more natural screening being on the park side. Uh, trees are relatively cheap as opposed to twenty-five thousand dollars. And then you wouldn't have the noise issue either with the garbage. And then you could locate your trash chute all the way in the basement. But that's a design thing. But the fact is, then, then they have a, that all the action, all the business, the cars, the vehicles, the trucks, your, if you have deliveries coming in, people moving in, all that action's on the park side away from the neighbors, from the residents. Uh, to, to have it all localized in one area seems a, a better fit than having stuff happening at both ends of the building. I'm, I'm just more concerned about the residents because, like you said, there will be more activity with eleven more residents and maybe more visitors. I don't know, uh, how it's going to work. Um, but that's still kind of a concern in my, the location of that. It doesn't need to be there. Uh, I see it was designed there, but it, it can be redesigned to be relocated in a, a more feasible spot. That's my thoughts on it.
Good. Did anybody else have any questions for the development team?
One more then, if we're not going to talk anymore trash. It's back to the handicap parking. Um, to relocate that, I know there is some inside the building, but your guests that come that are handicapped, seniors visit seniors, uh, they're not going to park inside the garage. They're going to park on the flat lot. And that green space that is to the left of the building to the west side, it, it's just such an ideal place. All you need is twenty-four feet, eight foot per access aisle and eight and eight, uh, for your parking spots. And then the sidewalk, uh, to move, to relocate that is, it just makes it a much more comfortable situation. And we're talking a senior place. So we, we don't think in general terms of a, a shopping store or a mall or something where people are usually able-bodied and can get across, uh, the area. To have it connected, especially in the winter, uh, to have that connected to a sidewalk that you know is going to be shoveled, uh, it just, again, a lot more feasible. And that's my thoughts.
Well, I, I appreciate your insight and, um, your, your concerns. Uh, as far as the accessible parking outside, that actually does meet code because they enter, get out of the vehicle, go to the front. And as long as you cross the road with a striped area, that's what meets code. I know it's not right up against the building.
Right.
But technically it still does. But I do hear your concerns about accessible parking. I have to defer to Bethesda and their programming as far as how they would want to address that.
Okay. Yeah, and you understand my-
Yeah.
The park, the sidewalk's going to be shoveled by the person on site that's there early in the morning, where the, the plowed portion of the driveway might not get hit till ten o'clock depending on their schedule with the plow or how much snow there is and all that. So that winter's a factor when you locate that. And it, it does, if you read the code, it does say, it advises it not to be crossing the driveline. So when it cannot be, it shouldn't be. Uh, the code is perceptive that way where it thinks positively and forward-thinking. So the ideal location would be there if it's technically feasible as chapter thirteen forty-one knows, as you know.
Right.
Then it, then it shall be there in, in that instance. But like you said, you're moving forward with it.
Right.
So, and it's just my thoughts.
Yeah, I appreciate your comments earlier.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you. So the public hearing is still open. If there's anybody else who had any questions Seeing none, I will go ahead and make a motion that we close the public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, more discussion.
I guess we never really touched on the variance request of the thirty-six to thirty-seven units. We, we kind of hopscotch that real quick. Um, with my thoughts on that is, it could be fifty units or twenty-four units. The size of the building is irrelevant. You could make a twenty-four unit building bigger than a fifty-two unit building. So that number to me doesn't really mean anything. It could be thirty-eight, thirty-nine. It would still be a feasible building on that site, um, depending on the size of the units inside the building. It's the size of the building that really gives it the bulk look, not the number of units in it. So I don't have a problem with the, along with the variance. Um, my thoughts once again.
What's the square footage of a unit?
Ten twenty-four, I think it said.
Ten twenty.
Five thousand square feet.
Yeah, it's, it's probably average. The villas are, are closer to seventeen hundred, I think it's sixteen hundred.
It's a little bigger.
Yeah, it's about-
Twelve hundred without the garage.
Right.
And, uh-
Can't hear.
Yeah.
It's a little smaller.
Yeah.
It went back over to the apartments.
It's, uh, about twelve hundred square feet for the villas and a little bit smaller for the apartments.
Yeah, I'll, I'll just piggyback on your comments that I, I think in this instance that, um, I mean, I appreciate the, the intent for that number. It's a number. You know, it's intended to try to limit the size of a, of a building in terms of its massing. But the reality is, is if we didn't approve the variance and it was thirty-six units, the building would likely look exactly the same as presented. Right? So, um, it seems, I don't want to say it's a moot point, but it, it doesn't seem to be a primary factor in terms of what was presented, in, in my opinion.
And it meets the criteria for the variance, uh, acceptable variance to us.
Right. So, um, I'd, I'd like to circle back to some of your initial comments, Todd. Um, in terms of the zoning, um, I mean, I'm glad through the discussion, I'm, I'm, I'm seeing various perspectives in terms of why we're, we're heading this direction. Um, you know, the, I guess the question is, you know, for the development as presented, um, is it, is it reasonable? I, I heard a suggestion about, you know, is there something that you can attach to the requirements of the development that would, um, prevent future, future development, you know, right up to the site in a way that was less desirable than what's presented here today? Um, I think that's, could be an interesting way to, to reconcile the two. I'm, I was interested to hear, um, from a neighborhood meeting standpoint that there, um, was there not feedback or concern about that buffer or, um, because there's a significant number of trees that are being, uh, removed to allow the roadway to go, to go in. Um, but it's, but it sounded like you, that wasn't a primary concern of the neighborhood discussion in terms of what that resulting buffer looks like?
I didn't hear it. I did step out of the room for about ten minutes. So I'm going to ask Paul if he heard anything.
No, it wasn't a huge issue for them. Um, although they were concerned that there was at least some sort of vegetation, some sort of underbrush that was there. I think there's recognition that some of the trees were dying, um, but that if the trees die, that there's still something between where the growth ends and the lower part of the trunk and that there's still something there to help block that area. Um, but I think that was also acknowledged a bit in the site design as well. So.
Yeah, when you plant a buffer like that, you, your trees start small, so they're crowded. And you're supposed to thin them out as they go. That's a maintenance issue that happens. But they usually do get neglected and then you have die-off. So-
Right.
Um, that, that's going to happen eventually if something isn't, uh, taken care of properly. But.
So Todd, is there, um, is there a mechanism from your perspective that could maintain, you know, what was once the intent of that buffer, um, while allowing a, a, a development like this to move forward in terms of, you know, creating the separation among buildings that I, that I think you're?
I think just keeping that, that wording or having the wording in there that leaves that buffer not to be developed as an R-three, uh, with the stipulations of an R-three or the, the rules of an R-three. However, that can be worded and tied together. I don't want it to hold up this project because it, it may seem minimal to me now, but it was there for a reason and it's going to be needed in the future possibly.
Yeah.
And the people that forethought this thought, well, this, man, let's make sure we have a, a nice buffer for these people. So I don't know how the wording would go. I'm not the wordsmith when it comes to that.
So, is what we're, is what we're really talking about a side yard setback?
Can I comment on that? I think, I think the R-three requirements are already being met. I think Pat made a comment that, that you required twenty-five foot buffer between R-three and R-one. And if it's, I don't, not even scale this out, but what my, I think that buffer right now is about twenty-five feet. If someone can verify that for us, that would be great.
The buffer's fifty feet.
Well, the buffer-
Fifty originally.
As proposed, however, it's at twenty-five feet.
Right. And that's because that's a setback in an R-three.
Right.
Twenty-eight feet to the curb and then a twenty-foot wide road.
So half, half of the greenery and trees are removed.
Yep. So over half of them are removed with the road, which is an essential part. But technically that could be a building backed up there, up to that twenty-five foot mark. And not only a building with thirty percent coverage in an R-one, it could increase to sixty percent. So then you're really bulking on that twenty-five foot mark with the R-three being in place. But even if the road was to be allowed and the twenty-five feet being removed, if the rest, if that fifty-foot buffer was still there or that fifty-foot strip was still there, there would never be a chance of any apartments or townhomes being backed up to that property with the sixty to seventy percent, uh, impervious surface coverage.
Yeah, so, go ahead.
Excuse me. So the fifty feet, just to give you any idea of where that would be, it would be right up against that, um, sidewalk and the road.
So we're losing a significant buffer, a portion of it. I just, I hate to see, and the road is inevitable. We're going to have to have traffic flow through there. And that is usually a part of the development. We're hitting a twenty-five foot setback, you know, from the road even still. But if we were to change it, it could be buildings in the future.
Yeah, so if we, um, if we look at this site where Eighty-Second Street is the, is the front, front yard of the site, right? When we're talking about front yard, side yard, rear yard setbacks. Um, I mean, it, essentially are we, are we talking about a, a side yard setback that could accomplish some of the goals that, you know, if we, if for example, a side yard setback to the structure was, in terms of how the plat was approved, it was required to be a minimum of fifty, if, fifty feet.
Fifty.
Because fifty feet is what exists today. So this development, um, would exceed that because- Because the, you know, distance from the side yard lot line to the curb is essentially roughly fifty feet. Right? So, um, these structures all fit within that minimum side yard setback. Is there. Is there a mechanism to connect that, that side yard setback to the plat? Which would prevent in the future structures being built within that fifty-foot, foot setback?
Yes, you can put a, 'cause you're rezoning it, you could put it in the rezoning ordinance. That it have a building foot setback of fifty feet to meet that buffer intent from the east property line.
You say put it in the zone rezoning, just specific to this project.
Right.
Obviously.
Right. When you rezone the property, you can add addition to it if you need to.
So then again, is there any advantage or disadvantage to rezoning it? I mean, what, why are we, why are we rezoning it? Is there a financial thing? Is there a, a ownership title deal or what?
Well, when you remove the property line, it's difficult to have a, one property having two different zoning districts. So it's easier if you had it all one zoning, but then put the parameters around it that you'd like.
And then the requirements are, basically it's treated like one site.
I'm guessing right now it's two different parcels, two different separate PIDs?
Yes.
For tip purposes, it's probably best for one as well.
All the structures are on the one property anyway with the required setbacks though. We're not gaining anything other than maybe the tip money, like you said, mentioned. That, that part I don't know.
Well, is, is that, is that a true statement? For example, I mean, there's a, there's a different setback for the townhomes than there is for, um, the apartment building in terms of that setback.
Would you consider that the backyard setback then?
I think this, the, the south edge of the site is the rear yard.
Yeah, but for individual buildings, not just the site. Would you still consider that a side yard setback even though that's the front of the home? 'Cause the way it's oriented?
I think for the site.
Particular to the site?
That you, that you gotta, at least in terms of how you define it.
Address to be at eighty-second, I believe.
So, and the, the confusion part of that is, is that in the R three zoning, the side yard setback doesn't list it from property line. List it's between units, fifteen feet between units. That's, that's the hard part of, uh, the way this is laid out. You know, if they're all in a row with the apartment building, then yes, the fronts would be the fronts, the sides would be the sides. But this, you have fronts and. You have fronts on the sides and fronts on the fronts as far as the setbacks go.
Yeah, though that's not how, would staff presented in the staff report as. The way we're talking right now, right, in terms of front yard, rear yard setbacks, we're talking about. Front yard of the site being on eighty-second street, rear yard to the south, side yards, um.
On the landscape plan, I'm sorry, um, if it's okay, I'm talking, I'm gonna talk about landscape for a second.
That's fine.
If I transition, um, it mentions the height of some of the trees. Um, and it, you know, a few trees are labeled as seven feet. I'm just kinda curious. What's really truly planned here? I mean, I know that there's a bunch that's already there, but what kind of height is existing and what kind of height will be added?
Let me go to the plans.
So the, your overstory trees, your deciduous trees are typical two and a half, two, three inches in caliper inches. And that's how you measure overstory trees and they're typically fifteen feet tall. Um, and then the. Shrubs are typically about, they start out to two to three feet, so they start a little smaller, but they'll get taller, of course. And then, oh, I see. Now the evergreen trees that they have proposed are between seven to eight feet tall. To give you an idea of the size of the plantings.
And that's probably strategically located to fill gaps.
Correct. One of the things that the applicant can do, and I've seen other cities do is, um, bec- 'cause they have kind of pledged to. Increase the landscaping. One of the things they can easily do is increase the size of the evergreen trees to ten to fourteen feet. To have a more of a immediate impact. That'd be one thing that I'd recommend.
I think that's, makes sense.
Yeah, you know, if we're, if we're thinking about a balanced approach, um. I'd be really supportive of that in those areas of potential conflict, right? Particularly with, with, whether it's the. Headlights coming around that turn. At, at a minimum, right? I. There's also, I'm not so sure the residents realize how much different that, that buffer's gonna feel with all the. All the trees that are removed in the roadway. So it, it feels like if there's anything that can be done to proactively create that sense of separation on the remaining strip. That, that's there, I think it would be wise to evaluate that.
Do we know if those homes have fenced yards?
I know there, there's a chain link fence back there. Um, I don't think there's any privacy fences.
Okay.
Okay. So we, we started down the path of, um, I think trying to reconcile the intent of, of the separation. Pat, are you able to guide us a little bit here in terms of, I mean, you're. I think you're hearing the goals. I, I think there's some consensus among us that, you know. The value of that buffer and what it was originally once zoned for has some good intentions, though it seems like there's advantages to. At least from an administrative perspective, get past that with the, with the rezoning. But how can we meet the original intent of ensuring that there's separation between buildings at a, at a minimum? Did I say that in a, in a good way?
Yeah, I think so. I, I kinda jotted something down that would maybe be added to the rezoning to all three. With a statement attached to it saying, uh, no structure to be erected other than a trash enclosure, 'cause that's in that buffer. Within a fifty-foot side yard setback from the easterly property line. If that's acceptable to the property owners, uh, Pat and the, the rest of the commission, I. If that achieves our goal, which I, I think it would, I mean, even though we're losing twenty-five feet of buffering right now, but. Obviously, the citizens weren't too concerned 'cause they've become knocking on my door too, 'cause I know I'm on, so.
Well, I'd, I'd be supportive of that because I think it, it's, uh. That's a balanced viewpoint in terms of, uh, ensuring, you know, long-term intent to sort of how, how this site was envisioned. And recognizing some potential separation thirty, forty, fifty years from now, that may matter even more than it does now.
And, and then it becomes vocal thirty years from now also. They, they can see it, uh, it's gonna be mentioned and they're gonna have to address it at that time. So. And then I, I'll, I'll recant some of my stuff I said about the R three, R four, uh, taking into. The Director Smith's words that, that, the, the goal is the, uh, comprehensive plan. That is our goal anyway. And we know the variance is lagged and are adjusted to achieve that, uh, language-wise and with the. The number of occupants is what we're talking about, uh, our dwellings from R three, R four, so. The, uh, the comprehensive plan is the progressive plan and shows this would fit that R three status at that time, so. And that's what it's guided for, so.
There, there may, it may just, I, I'm agreeing with you that in terms of where the, where the vision and, and the guidance comes from. But is there an administrative question in terms of if, if our current ordinances say one thing? You know, which is up to ten units per acre? Is there, there may be the potential of a step somewhere between that reconciles that?
I'll double check with Bob Voss or city attorney, um, but I believe the cap plan takes precedence.
Okay.
If the, if they are conflicting, but I, I'll double check before it goes to the city council.
Okay. That's good. Um, so. I think, uh, we, there's consensus among the vari- or, we talked about the variance, we talked about the zoning. Um, with regard to the preliminary plat and final plat, 'cause we're essentially recommending moving potentially with both. So what, what are the aspects of the site that are, um. You know, truly, I think we talked about a number of things, talked about access, uh, we talked about location of the trash enclosure. Where, where's everybody's heads at in terms of, what are, what are the essential things of, if any, in terms of adjustments?
Personally, I love the project. It's gonna freshen the site, which needs to be done. Um, it provides a community with housing that we desperately need. It provides community with housing they've been asking for. Um, I like the project a lot.
I like the green space in the middle. That's, you know, that brings people together.
And of course, my suggestions about the parking and the trash, you know, I'm not on the design team either and it is someone else's building, but. That's what we're here for, is to express the ideas and that's just something for the council to take in a spotter also to absorb. As it's captured in our minutes, uh, they can, they can make their thoughts on that also. Um, but that is a design thing and it, it also has to go in front of a, a review of the, the building officials, so. There's many more steps, uh, that can be stepped on my words there, so. Overall, I don't have a problem with this project at all. Now that we've hashed through a few things.
One, one tiny little thing, Pat, you mentioned the caliber, caliber, I believe that's the word you used to, you could increase the caliber of the tree. I see that there's an existing wood fence here. I'm curious how effective that is at screening. If it's more cost-effective to potentially replace that existing wood fence to create the same outcome for a less cost. That might be an option too.
Yeah, we can explore that with the applicant.
Okay, so it, it sounded like, um, we'd recommend further consideration be given to, um, some of these things. Including. Site access, trash enclosure, parking, fencing. But we're not necessarily thinking that there are conditions needing to be attached to the, to the recommendation for approval?
I agree.
Is that what I'm hearing?
Mm-hmm.
Agreed.
I could support that as well.
So what do, what do we do? Are we, do we make three motions here or do we make one motion?
You can make one motion or you can separa- separate them.
I think having three, uh, that way we can throw the language at the rezoning from R one to R three section.
You can do it either way.
Or just add it at the end?
Right.
Okay.
Sound like you're ready to form a motion.
Okay, at this time, I will make a motion to recommend to the city council approval of the preliminary, preliminary final plat. Variance for the number of units in an apartment building and the rezoning from R one to R three with the language. Uh, of, there be a, no structure other than the trash enclosure to be erected within a fifty-foot side yard setback. From the easterly property line north to south.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'm assuming this will go forward to, to the next city council meeting?
Yes, I thi- we'll talk to the applicant and make sure they can tighten these things up before the next city council meeting, hopefully.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you for all your feedback.
Thank you.
Alright, moving on to the next, uh, next discussion item on our agenda. Tonight we have a MWF presentation.
MWF is a affordable housing developer and they're interested in doing some projects in Victoria. And I suggested that a representative of them come to, uh, the planning commission of the city council just to get an idea of what affordable housing is. Uh, since, since, especially since we haven't had much affordable housing recently built. Um, so Chris Stoka from MWF is here and give you a little presentation, question and answer.
Yeah, there are a brief PowerPoint presentation we'd like to run through, um, just a second. How's everyone doing?
Good, welcome. Don't worry, we're as comfortable as you are with the silence, so.
I'm assuming M, MWF doesn't stand for Monday, Wednesday, Friday?
It doesn't. I wish it did. That sounds nice.
Is this what you're looking for?
Um.
Or is this the other one?
PowerPoint?
I get that. That's not it. I'll find it.
Um, so I could probably just go off the cuff here. I gotta print it out. Um, so our company, uh, we develop affordable housing. It's all that we do. We also call it workforce housing. So the, the financing vehicle that we utilize to fi- to finance these developments is, uh, housing tax credit. That can finance developments that serve residents that earn between thirty and sixty percent of the area median income. Which, uh, is about, so the sixty percent limit is about, um, between thirty-nine thousand and sixty-five thousand. Depending on the household size. So we call our housing workforce housing, 'cause it's kind of at the higher end of that spectrum and it's developed primarily for working-class families. So, um, families, uh, younger families that are just starting out in their careers, um, so a lot in the service industry. Um, we get a lot of, uh, younger medical professionals like nurses and aides and things like that. Um, so we've developed twelve hundred and forty-nine units and we have another six hundred either under construction. Or breaking ground this year. And most of our, uh, most of our properties are in Minnesota. We have a few in Iowa and, um. One in Illinois, so. So the way the program works is every year we apply to Minnesota Housing in the state of Minnesota for financing. And we compete with other developers throughout the state. Um, and about one out of every three, uh, proposals that's submitted is approved. Um, and it's really, it's a really competitive program, um, as you can imagine. And we've had a lot of success lately because we find sites that are in, um, areas that are, um. In high need of, uh, housing. Um, there's like a mapping scoring system that Minnesota Housing, um, utilizes to identify some of this stuff. And, uh, we've just been able to find good sites and also have built a pretty good relationship with communities, um, in the metro area. So, uh, the closest community that we've developed in here is Waconia, um, Interlock and Place we developed in two thousand and eight. And then we just got approved for another project there, um, Vista Ridge Apartments and Interlock has been really good for us. It's been fully occupied and. Lot of good, good residents there and, um. So we really like the, the area and thought we'd just come out here and, um, start to build a relationship with you and the city council. So, um, we have some frequently asked questions as part of the presentation, but maybe I can just ask, answer any questions that you guys might have instead.
Have you talked about scoring? What, how, where is Victoria sitting there? Is this, uh, an area that you see that's depleted on affordable housing? Is that why you're here, basically?
Yeah, so, um. I'm not exactly sure how the algorithms work, but, uh, I know that that Met Council, um, need, uh, assessment is one of the things that's factored in some, in some capacity. So we definitely looked at that, um, and we know that Victoria is a growing community, and, um, I don't think you guys have had any of this type of housing developed in recent memory.
It, I think our biggest challenge out here for that type of development is the, the income level of people, and then the property values, the average property value is over four hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah.
So it, it really lessens the percentage of people, yeah.
Something we definitely need to apply with the Met Council, I recall from our meetings that we recently had, and I think we've got some land actually slated for that in our twenty forty plan. Your timing is very, very good.
Oh, nice.
I'm assuming this is at market rents, or what do the market rents be on these units?
So we conduct a market study before we apply for funding, and they kind of determine based on the parameters and based on the number of residents in the. Area that meet the income qualifications, this is where your rents should be. The, I think I have a sample here, um, so for our Waconia project, like a one bedroom's eight fifty, a two is between nine hundred and a thousand, um, and a three bedroom. Which we typically do on our projects are about eleven fifty to thirteen hundred, fourteen hundred in some of the, um, more inner ring suburbs.
And the subsidy comes from Minnesota Housing?
Yeah, so, um. So that tax credit's actual, actually a federal tax credit, but, um, the federal government basically gives it to Minnesota Housing annually to distribute as they see fit. One thing that they do look at, uh, is they want to see the local community participate in some fashion, um, so. Often we'll look at like a fee waiver or a TIF, or maybe work with the city on some creative solutions. We haven't really looked at that here because it's a part of the scoring system, and we don't know really how the site scores, because we don't really have a site for sure yet, so. Um, but that is, usually we try and pursue some sort of, um, we call it financial participation.
Thank you.
Is the location ever determined by close proximity to employers?
You know, um, there's not a specific scoring item regarding that, but we do provide, um, if we can, if there's local employers that. Want to, you know, provide a letter of support, that's always helped. There's like the hard and fast scoring system, and then there's kind of the other things like the, um, uh, I don't know, fluff probably isn't the right word, but there's other things that can help you. That's an actual, um, scoring item. Um, one of the maps is called economic integration, so if there's a community that has very high income, um, or like, um. Without a lot of, uh, housing that's affordable, then they designate that as a high priority area, and that's one of the things that Victoria, Victoria has, probably because of the. Single family homes you mentioned.
And then the buildings you've built, I mean, with federal dollars involved, are they like prevailing wage jobs, are they, uh, local companies within the state, are they bid nationally? I mean, one of, one of the best things you can do for a community is to use as close to local talent as you have to build the building, because that keeps. Some of the revenues that you're building the building with in that community gets spent here, people end up living here, you know, there's a great way to do that. How do, how do you promote your projects and, and push it out to different bids or ideas?
Yeah, so we do have, um, contractor that we typically use, uh, for as far as the general contractor, and I know they solicit bids, and we encourage local subcontractor bidding. And at the end of the day, you know, and then there are sometimes prevailing wage requirements depending on, um, the sources that are a part of the projects. We've done both prevailing wage and non prevailing wage, um, and then I, you know, I guess at the end of the day, it's really comes down to, um. The requirements and then the cost and the quality, and, um, also kind of the trust that we have with the GC and the GC has with the subs.
Yeah, it's, it's just the people you're targeting with this type of rental is the people that start out in construction or in, in that phase of work. And that's really who you're going after here, and that's the, the people that need the jobs within the community too, so.
Have you guys had any local employers, um, discuss this or bring this up at all?
There are some local developers that could handle this project, but I don't think we've seen this type of project presented that I'm aware of. You know, the city of Carver just put a nice product together that filled up very quickly, that turned out very, very nice over in the Copper Hills development, right next to the elementary school and the public transit.
That was our competitor, so we'll do a slightly better job than that.
That was pretty good.
Yeah, that was a nice project, I know which one you're talking about.
Wait, Chris, I got your PowerPoint up, so.
Oh, okay. Um, well, I've covered a lot of it, but, um, probably the, let's see, I think the fifth slide we can start at, yeah, this, this looks good. But that's the income range that we're looking at, actually, these are the maximum, so it'll be a little bit, it'll be, um, below that depending on what rent levels we end up at. So that's how we, there's a, basically a, a floor so the residents have to show they both can afford to pay the rent, and that they also don't exceed this, the rent limits. So it's kind of a, a range, um, so these, those are the maxims there. There's a question we actually receive a lot, um, especially in communities with, um, campuses, but. There are some exceptions, but it's very, very difficult as a college student to apply, or to, um, to be eligible. And these are the rents we went through. We cover all the utilities except, uh, electricity. And then we conduct a market study, um, to confirm that those rents are possible. Oh, I forgot to mention this, so a lot of people think we are, you know, a ti, a typical developer kind of comes in and, um, builds a property, leases it up and flips it, but we've never sold a property. We're required by the program that we use to hold it for at least fifteen years, but our company's been around for twenty and we haven't sold any, we've rehabbed some, but not sold any. And then, uh, we also have in-house management, so actually the director of our property management company, um, they manage all of our properties. She sits right next to me, so we're, um, we have a really open line of communication, and, um, when we meet with, uh, neighborhoods, they have a lot of questions regarding management, and she'll usually attend, and. Um, it helps develop a sense of comfort knowing that we're not just here to build it and walk away. And then, uh, yeah, we'll have an on, each, each of our properties has an onsite manager, a maintenance tech and a caretaker, and at least one of those lives onsite. And then we talk about screening, which is basically the same as a marker eight property, with the exception of, um. We have to do one additional level, which is the maximum income qualification, so we have to do a little bit more digging, uh, on the, um, income of the resident, just because of the, the. Funding that we use. And then, um, this is all coming from questions that we receive from neighborhoods, um, when we have our neighborhood meetings, and they always ask about property values, and. We've looked up, uh, numerous studies online and then our own portfolio and seen how, how it's impacted property values. Um, and it has either had a positive influence or a negative, or excuse me, or a neutral. And it all really depends on, you know, does the property fit in with the area, um, from the outside, ours looks just like a normal apartment building, and. As long as it's properly managed too, there's never issues. So typically our timeline, um, get the land under contract in the spring, then we apply to, um, the state in June, this is just an example from this year. And then, uh, in the fall, Minnesota Housing awards, and then the following summer, or spring or summer, we start construction. And then by the end of the year or early the following year, we, um, are open and we have our grand opening, so. Um, takes a little bit of time to put these properties together, this is best case too, so it takes, you know, two years from the moment we get the land under contract to the moment we open. Often it takes three, um, hopefully no more than that, but that's kind of how the program goes.
Is that pretty typical for land to be under contract a year before, or two years before?
It was a lot easier like six years ago, um, so now we'll just work with, um, it depends on the community and kind of what's going on, um. And, uh, like, one site that we are looking at in Victoria, it's a part of a master development where they're still kind of figuring things out, so a longer. Due diligence period wasn't that big of a problem. Some areas that are in really hot markets, um, you know, we'll either have to put earnest, like, earnest money down, or we just get outbid, it's, it's kind of one of the challenges that we face. It's a good question, though.
Well, just, it impacts your ability to make it a reality sometimes, especially in a hot, a demanding market.
Yeah, so in June we submit, and then we just don't hear anything for like five months, which is kind of interesting, but, um. But then in November, when we hear back, uh, that funding's approved, um, it's pretty much a go, so we've never had to return funding to the state, so. That's the positive thing.
And your rental percentage is always high, I assume, because it's a demand product?
Yeah, I think, uh, throughout the state, they're saying like twenty-five thousand or some, or that's just the metro area, I think, they need just tens of thousands, yeah. And there's just not enough funding, I mean, they do like one thousand to two thousand a year maybe, and we're trying to come up with some creative ways to help. Create more, but it's, uh, yeah, it's challenging, especially with land prices, you know, the way they are today.
I'm encouraged you're looking at a site in Victoria, I hope it's somewhere close, um, to Inglor and forty, and, um, Victoria Drive, because I just see. Affordable housing somewhere in that pocket, because that's where I, I hope that we have some larger employers someday.
If anybody else has any suggestions for areas, take them. Um, my colleague Ryan Schwickert, he's actually the, um, the person that's assigned to this area, um, but he couldn't attend tonight, so. Um, he does have more information, I don't know exactly if he's looked at this area, but I'll follow up with him. Let him know. I like the Victoria Flats, that's a nice, it's a nice building.
Well, thank you for the overview. Do you have any other questions?
Pugging staff, they'll help you out. It's something we need, though, I, I fully agree, after living here, like I said, I keep seeing, going back to my thirty years of living here, no senior housing, no affordable housing. I think I bought the last house under a hundred thousand dollars in this city thirty years ago.
I'll give you two for it.
Well, thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, so we'll keep moving along here, next on our agenda tonight is a public hearing for the small cell wireless. Is that Paul going to walk us through that one?
Yes, Chair. Chair, Commission. Today I'd like to talk about a proposed ordinance that, uh, changes our small cell wireless facilities in the public right of way. Um, this is in response to a state legislature change, um, that now allows small cell wireless as a permitted use in the right of way. Um, I'll just go over the staff report quickly, um, as the time allows. But, um, in twenty seventeen, the state legislature amended the state statutes to authorize local government units, LGUs, to regulate the right of way. The amendment permits wireless providers to deploy small cell wireless facilities and wireless support structures in the right of way. Um, a small cell wireless facility is statutorily defined as an antenna that is located inside an enclosure, um, that's less than six cubic feet, with all the associated wireless components being no more than twenty-eight cubic feet. So it's a pretty small facility compared to traditional wireless facility, which is not a large antenna mass that's many feet high. These low powered antennas provide cellular data coverage to supplement, um, cellular providers' networks. Basically, these are meant to facilitate future needs as we increase our usage and also new technologies come onboard. Um, the new law requires LGUs to approve or deny small cell wireless facilities, um, within ninety days. The failure to do so basically creates an automatic approval. It's been suggested that, you know, the implementation of this will happen in April, and so if an application comes in and we don't have something in place to guide us. As to what the regulations are, it would start the clock, and so we'd be put at a disadvantage. Um, in addition to that, um, cities like Victoria would be allowed to recover some of our right of way management costs in the form of a permit. Um, this also includes, um, different types of co-location, or if they're on city, on property, they'd have to pay basically a rent per year, and then pay the additional, um. Um, electricity charges as they're associated, I believe it's up to a hundred and fifty dollars, and then, um, another twenty-five dollars for maintenance for each site. May not sound like a lot, but when we're talking about maybe hundreds of facilities, that could be quite a bit. Although it sounds like, um, the state has provided an, an access to telecommunications to be able to go into the right of way. It also provides, um, cities, uh, an opportunity to collaborate and to be, um, community builders when we deal with these particular types of, um, facilities. They help, um, the residents in the sense that increases coverage for all cellular services, so if you have really bad signal service, this might help improve that. We're also looking at better implementation of future technologies such as driverless cars and the Internet of Things technologies, so a lot of our, um, locational devices will be enhanced by these. Technologies, if you have, say, like, um, a model vehicle that is self-driving or autonomous, these will help implement those, and so that'd be really important. And also it reduces reliance on large macro cell towers, so you might notice those two hundred foot towers that kind of stick out like a sore thumb. Um, this will help minimize those or make those less relevant, or at least, uh, only in really high needed areas. Um, the proposed amendment, um, amends chapter twenty-two, article six pertaining to the right of way management for, in the following ways. The ordinance creates a small cell wireless facility permit to co-locate on public right of ways, it imposes a small wireless, um, facility permit fee. It incorporates a ninety day deadline for action on small cell wireless, the ordinance sets a fifty foot maximum height, um, limitation for wireless support. This ordinance also, um, limits, um, these, these facilities extending more than ten feet above a wireless support structure, so you won't see something amassed of fifteen, twenty feet, they'll be limited to ten. Um, this ordinance also imposes, um, separation requirements between new and existing wireless support structures. This ordinance also, um, requires a co-location agreement, um, with the city, if there's going to be enough, more than one on these particular types of poles. And that we also, um, recover right of way management, statutory rent and other costs of electricity. Um, we also provide for a denial process, that's really important, because you have to have a certain set of criteria for denial, and that's included in the ordinance. Also, we're recommending a conditional use permit for the central business district for small cell wireless facilities, basically because of the unique character of the downtown area. Um, we want to make sure that, um, another reason for that as well is that we actually own lighting in the downtown, as opposed to the rest of the community where it's owned by a cell or. Another electricity provider, I'm not exactly sure who it is. Minnesota Power, yeah. Minnesota Power, yeah, exactly. With that, um, what staff is looking for is a motion to recommend to the city council approval of the attached ordinance regulating small wireless facilities in the public right of way. For your visual pleasure, I have included some photos.
Very nice photos, by the way.
Yeah, so what I was trying to illustrate here was the difference between a city that's looking, of course, this is no knock on Cleveland. But, um, you know, Minneapolis has a very, um, collaborative approach, I think, to use small cell wireless. And so you'll see like they're working a lot, their ordinances are crafted in such a way, and by the way, if I may add a small asterisk, that. The language that's in this ordinance was actually model ordinance language that was, um, developed between multiple cities and legal scholars and researchers. And on top of that, I think the league also had a hand in crafting some of this as well, and so this was not just kind of haphazardly thought of, but rather it was put together by a lot of. Intelligent and legal minds to help craft this in a way that wouldn't be overly prohibitive, but also protect the interests of the city as well. Just, I want to make sure that was put in there. Um, but you can see the difference between a Minneapolis, um, small cell wireless facility, or you'd see maybe in Denver similarly, versus something that's kind of plopped on a utility pole. We want to steer more towards the left side, Minneapolis side versus the other one. Um, there's also another example, this is a little more pixelated on mine, but again, you see this very collaborative city input, um, through like, say, the conditional use permit. Um, for city-owned infrastructure, um, on the left, as opposed to just kind of, we can do it, so we're going to do it on the right. And then the bottom photo is a photo of a wireless facility with a, um, pedestrian level lighting, but also there's a small box to the lower left-hand side, it kind of looks like a fake mailbox. That's actually where all of the electronics is hosted, and so you can have it all off the pole, have it on a small, maybe. And so you can have it all off the pole, have it on a small, maybe an art facility or some sort of unique design, like a sidewalk art or something. And so it can all be enclosed in there and still service the same purpose, which is making sure people have adequate self-service. Um, with that, I have, uh, the ordinance itself for your, um, review. With that, I can take questions if you have them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Go for it.
Paul, is it safe to say this technology is coming with or without us? We're just given the opportunity to govern how it may come.
That is a very fair assessment.
Thank you.
The demand is there.
I don't see anything, maybe I overlooked it, with, uh, the construction, the look, the visibility of these units. Anything saying it must be non, no advertising on the items, you know, some of them have a stamp brand on them, Tegna, or I've seen those in certain communities.
Right.
That's, that's a site issue.
Right.
Something that would say it must be of, uh, contrasting color or, or exacting color of, uh, the mounted position pole or structure. And no advertising, no brand names, no numbers, uh, you know, number twenty-four, number twenty-five type deal.
Right.
It becomes a visual thing. Is there any language we can add or you, you have in there that I'm missing?
There's nothing in the model ordinance, but I could talk to our attorney to see if that's something that's, uh, it's, um, something that we can add to the ordinance that would limit that. Um, I know in the downtown area, the purpose of the conditional use was so that we could have that discussion with the self, small cell provider in the downtown, just because it has that character and feel that's separate from, say, the rest of the city, since we have stricter, more stringent design standards in the downtown. In some, in some other neighborhoods, um, such as like in R-one district, I've heard of other communities trying to use the conditional use permit. The difference, though, is that here, there's no city infi, there's no city poles or city infrastructure that they would could co-locate on. So they probably build their own pole, a private pole. And there's very little in the way of how we manage the look and feel of that, other than if it goes on an Excel pole, Excel has a model for every Excel pole that they have. And they are very stringent about the look and feel of their particular infrastructures. We can definitely look into that.
How about attachments to existing, uh, structures, water towers, smokestacks, uh, rooftops? There's a wa, water tower in the town I work in. There's twenty-seven different small cell signal repeaters on there, and it looks terrible. They're not uniform, they're not spaced properly. They're haphazard on the water tower, and after the last five years, it looks terrible.
Right.
It's another site thing. Is, is there any way to have consistency built into that?
Well, I think, um, on, say, like, the city hall or, say, on a water tower, those, I believe, would fall into a negotiated contract with the city. And so the city would have a lot of discretion over whether or not the council would have a lot of discretion over whether or not a facility was designed a certain way. I'm assuming that that would fall under the purview of council at that point.
Since you own, since we own that structure?
Right, exactly. The small cell is, since it's defined in such a way where it's small, they tend to be not very effective above a certain height. And so putting it on a very large building or on like, say, like a water tower, it wouldn't be as effective as having it closer to the customers they serve, which has a fairly narrow bandwidth and it's a fairly defined space that's able to operate in. Um, that's why they need so many of them and why it's so important. But basically, we went to the state legislature to have a lot of our codes preempted so that they could go ahead and do this, is because they're gonna need to put so many in. They want just a streamlined process of getting that done.
One of the questions I have is the maintenance of it. What is their expectation from the city in terms of their ability to maintain these towers?
That's a good question. I know the maintenance costs are built in, so we have recovery fees that we can attach to them. If it's city-owned and city-operating, you know, basically, we own the pole, but they co-locate on it. I know the long-term cost of maintenance hasn't really been disclosed, because they haven't been around that long. And so we don't know exactly what the maintenance is going to be. I know that the design of the infrastructure has to be different. For example, I was at an Excel, um, meeting regarding these types of infrastructure, and they were telling me that they won't install one of these poles that can support this weight anywhere where there's a speed limit higher than thirty-five miles an hour, because it has to be made of steel, which is different than the current structure, and that there's no breakaway bolts. Because if they did, high wind impact might destroy them. And so if a car were to hit these things, they'd basically wrap themselves around it. So that's why they're very careful about, you know, where they're putting these things, you know. I don't, I don't imagine they're gonna be on the highway, but they're gonna be in downtowns. And that's kind of where they're looking to be the most effective, is downtowns where these exist. But that's a good question as to how we recover those. I think, um, when we address the fee issue, we'll probably have to address that as well.
I just, I just wonder how it's done. I mean, is it a quick, simple process, or is it gonna impact traffic flows? I don't know. I mean, obviously, if cars rely on it, people, you would hope to give these technicians grace, because we all need it, but, um...
Well, it's also kind of a, it's, it's a new operator in the right-of-way. And so like, we're, we're so accustomed to, um, the basic utilities, like, um, fiber optics, electricity. And now we have a new player in the right-of-way, which is, uh, wireless telecom. And so it's how, how do they work with us and how do we work with them to make it fast, efficient, and less burdensome to the, um, residents? And I think it's experience will play a big factor in it, and then working with, um, our Public Works and engineering staff. Um, and again, they also reviewed this as well, the engineering staff and Public Works, and they had no negative comments and they had no, um, reservations about this issue.
I think this is great. It's proactive. And I, you know, as I'm, as I'm reading through this, um, you know, some of the examples like Minneapolis and elsewhere, like, it makes me think there maybe was an even additional step in terms of unifying a standard, in terms of, I mean, they probably have a standard spec for their light poles, and so therefore they developed a stand, you know, a prescriptive standard for how these things could be integrated in those. But I think that, that's, my understanding is not, that's not necessarily where we're trying to get to. We're trying to get and provoke a conversation so that there's, this becomes a negotiation in some ways, in terms of to arrive at the best solution.
Right.
Because the best solution's probably gonna be different, you know, whether you're in the business district or you're through residential neighborhoods and, um, and the opportunities to where these things are mounted. So if we're heading on a path where we can avoid the one example on the right and allow conversations to happen, anything but that, then it feels like we're on the right track.
Right.
I agree. They look like pine trees in Phoenix. They're pine trees, palm trees.
You're probably being very nice. Any other questions or discussion on this? I feel like, um, I'm gonna open the public hearing. And seeing no comments, I will make a motion that we close the public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone care to formulate a motion?
There's nobody in a hurry on this one. I'll take this one. Recommend making a motion to recommend approval to City Council, an amendment to Chapter twenty-two, Articles at six, right-of-way management regulating small wireless facilities in the public right-of-way.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
It'll move forward.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda tonight is a Lake and Water Quality Advisory Committee matrix. Paul, gonna walk us through?
Chair, Commission. Uh, this next one is a request from the, um, we call Lakes and Water Quality Advisory Committee. They had, uh, assembled over a period of a couple of months, a list and matrix of concerns and recommendations for the Planning Commission and Council. Um, their request is to provide critical feedback, um, regarding this matrix and to make recommendations and concerns regarding, um, said matrix. I can go over, uh, for those that don't know, maybe what this organization, it's one of our city organizations, I can explain a little bit of what that is. And so the Lakes and Water Quality Advisory Committee was established in two thousand and eighteen as an appointed body of representatives from the areas of the city who are impacted by lakes and water quality issues. Each member is designated from a lake in the city of Victoria, with an additional member from Pearson's Lake in Laketown, and one at-large member. Their role within the city is to advise the staff, commissions, and council on issues that affect the community with respect to water quality and lakes. During the August meeting of the committee, the members began outlining topics and issues that were of concern. In these meetings that followed, a list or matrix was refined and organized into a document that was approved by the committee on February seventh. Um, the list was to be attached to a statement of purpose, which is also attached, uh, and created on March fourteenth. These items are included as an attachment. Um, the goal of presenting the matrix to the Planning Commission and councils to provide the LWQAC with critical feedback recommendations, so that their efforts, um, of the committee can be honed and focused, um, and that other efforts aren't duplicated. So efforts that the staff already does or that the, um, commounds, council and commission, um, feel like they have ownership over it, and so they don't need to focus on those particular issues. These, um, recommendations and concerns are organized in order of priority. So you may notice a number, um, associated with each, um, recommendation. Some numbers are duplicated, representing equal priority amongst those members. Um, there's also, um, cells that contain lettered abbreviations that represent specific concerns as it relates to their recommendations. In total, there are ten recommendations. And so with the presentation of those, um, concerns in your review, what they're looking for, again, is critical feedback and guidance regarding, um, some of the concerns you have with this particular list, um, some of the areas you believe may be inappropriate for the committee to consider. That may bear the purview of another org, another organization within the city, or things that maybe they could expand upon, that could provide further guidance, so they can be successful in their mission. Um, with that, I'd be happy to take, um, suggestions and bring them back to the, um, lakes water quality or, um, questions you may have regarding the matrix.
I love the way they presented it.
Yeah.
It's just so easy to understand.
So do we all want to attack these, uh, one at a time, briefly, if you have a...
Yeah, I... I, I feel like there's, there's ten of them. I, I want to be respectful of the committee's work in terms of, um, I don't want to just say it looks great. I, I think that it, it warrants some discussion, so, uh, I agree. Let's, let's talk through them one by one and, and Todd's got, got a lot to say. But I think, I think we all do if we just talk through them, so, um, would you mind facilitating that? Would you mind kind of talking us through?
I, I will do my best.
Start with number one.
Absolutely. Would you like me to read it?
Uh, I don't know that it's necessarily to read it, but, um, so, initial thoughts for item number one. Anybody, some initial reactions?
I really might, when I first read it, I understand what they're getting at, but I don't think the shoreline ordinance should be above and beyond any other PUD that's set in place for that, uh, development at that time. The rules should be set forward, uh, as the base document, the PUD, if it's not gonna be regular zoning. The shoreline zoning is, uh, in place to check what we would do through a PUD, but the collaboration through the PUD usually would include anything that's within the shoreline ordinance anyway. So to put it in the shoreline ordinance itself, any language, uh, I don't think that's necessary, because of all the work that does go into a PUD to begin with, especially a shoreline PUD.
Yeah, I'm, I, I'm wondering if, uh... Are you reading into that, that this is implying that it's, I don't know that it's suggesting that it's, uh, it's doing something different administratively. I think it's stating that if there's, if there's a PUD that falls in a shoreline zone, just ensuring that whatever requirements for the PUD that are being considered would meet or exceed tho, those that the shoreline ordinance would. It's not putting it in the shoreline ordinance.
Yeah.
And I think you're saying that it already, it already sort of does that.
Right, and I, I may misspoke there when I said putting it in ordinance, uh, it's, it's already there, um, it's already in place. That's what a PUD does, is ensure that we at least have the quality of the underlying ordinance involved with it, with the PUD.
Yeah.
Not to add any language, I didn't, I guess I didn't mean that, misstated that, but...
I agree with Jeff. It just brings us to heightened awareness of those PUDs in the district. They're not saying we have to add that to the ordinance itself.
What they're saying is they've, essentially, I, there's like, um, and I don't know the, the shoreline ordinance by heart yet, but there are some requirements that, there are some lakes that if they have a repairing lot, their minimum lot size is an acre. And so what they're saying is that you can't deviate from that. The shoreline ordinance should supersede over any PUD. Even with a PUD, you should not be able to deviate from the shoreline ordinance.
Yeah, I think one of the, one of the challenges that comes to mind is, you know, when we say provide equal or better environmental protections, that the difficulty is that it becomes subjective by nature, right? And that the, the nature of the PUD is to, um, sort of ident, you know, understand intent and not identify those opportunities based on flexibility. And so, um, I think if, if what you're saying, Pat, is that the desire of this comment is to just flat-out have to follow the shoreline ordinance, that... I like sort of aligning the intent, but that's sort of, um, basically, we're saying then PUDs aren't allowed in, in a, in the shoreline zone.
I didn't read it the way that you're right.
Right.
And I, I think on the surface, that seems like that's a good intention, but I'm not, I'm not entirely sure that's true in terms of... The shoreline may, may be a place where flexibility and, and enhanced attention to certain aspects may be warranted. So I think, I think there'd want to be more discussion around that one before sort of totally removing the, the ability to, um... Because there's, there's unique instances that I think could be done better, um, having that flexibility.
And especially, you want the flexibility of the PUD and our next lake that we would absorb through, uh, annexation, you know, that is a larger lake. It's a general development lake, I believe, or a general recreation lake. You, that might be a great tool to get more people to that, they can be able to use it, uh, a PUD, as opposed to just saying, okay, lakes are lakes, lakes are property only of this size, nothing else. So I think that, that we need that tool, uh, to be able to bend the rules of the shoreline ordinance, the PUD. That's what the, that tool is in place for.
So I'll, I'll admit that the way I, the way I read this and the, the way you said it, Pat, I wasn't reading it the same way that you said it.
No, I didn't.
I was, I was reading it that there, that there was still implying that there's, um, flexibility for PUDs, but it seemed like the focus was more on, um, recognizing that if it's in a shoreline, that the shoreline ordinance exists and that any deviation is equal or better than what the shoreline is requiring. The, the interesting thing about that is like, how do we deem what's equal or better? And that comes to the expertise question. So I think as this one is explored even further, I, there could be some more discussions around... So say we're facing a, a, a site that's perfect for a PUD, and there, there's some aspects of that site that are being proposed. You know, is it, is the, are the members of the Planning Commission the right group to say, yes, we believe that, that exceeds, meets or exceeds the shoreline ordinance? Or in those unique cases, is partnership with the Water Quality Committee as another voice in the process, a good addition in terms of tapping that expertise? I don't think we're trying to decide tonight, right, but we're just trying to give some feedback.
Right.
Is that good for the first item?
Mm-hmm.
Item number two.
We've certainly experienced that recently, the negative of that.
Yeah, so we've, we've often talked about this in, in developments, um... You know, I think there's a developer's agreement, but then there is, um, the required communication that occurs between developers and landowners when they purchase. But I think there's been some questions in the past, like, is that the kind of thing that gets lost in thirty or forty different pages of, of closing, closing documents? And, um, so the, the opportunity for education maybe is lacking. I don't know what, some of you who are in the industry have a perspective on that, if that's, if there's an improvement to that process. If that's, if there's improvements to that process that could be done?
I'm curious, you know, they talked about applying a deed restriction earlier today. I'm curious in what circumstances you can actually implement that to a property owner? Because on the surface, that sounds like a great solution, but I don't know if that is something that we can do.
Could it be more wrapped around the construction of the property? I mean, when that happens, because that's usually where the developers agreement comes in, is up towards the construction end of it, and that be tied to the property upon a building permit or...
Well, and how's it get transferred to the next buyer?
In theory and in...
When a permit's filed, it could be added to the title, or when the property's bought, to the title, or to the construction agreement that's made. I don't know, I don't know that the legal end of it, that's going to bind it, you know?
10,000 of you on paper, and in theory, it looks fantastic. Every development starts out with a set of rules, governing guidelines on finishes, materials, tree preservation, fences, setbacks, blah, 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 blah. And then developer comes, development goes, you may have a neighborhood association, it may last, it may not. Who's the enforcer? Great, great, great concept, but if you, you'll see it time and time again. Look at, I'm guessing with, even with our own community, there's multiple neighborhood associations, multiple governing documents that, if you dig deep, they exist. If you go into Minneapolis-St. Paul, there's some horrific deed restrictions. There's certain neighborhoods of certain ethnicities, you're not allowed to even live there, if you look at the deed restrictions. It's not legal in today's world, but back in 1950 something, something when it was developed, those things still exist, they're trying to clean it up as of today. So good in theory, hard to put into play.
Yeah, is there, is there aspects of this that, like, for example, there are conditions, you know, like in a PUD, or conditional use permit, you know, there are explicit conditions or requirements that are attached? That's one thing, like, that's memorialized in one way. But is this getting at, oftentimes, there's other things that get communicated in a developers agreement? Or, right, there's particular things that are attached to the approval, but there's other things that are communicated. I mean, we've seen, we've seen recommendations that these things need to be included in developers agreement, but we may not have, but they may not be explicit conditions of the development.
Right. I think, Paul, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but this one comes up, I believe, because of people removing trees near lakes, and they were thinking that if there's a condition on the developer for not removing trees, how can somebody come in that owns the lot and then starts removing trees? That's why I think there's a disconnect between developer regulations and then the homeowner regulations.
Right, and currently, there's a tree ordinance which restricts removal of trees by residences.
Yes.
Residents.
And it is a lot easier to regulate the removal of trees with developers than it is with residents.
That context is helpful.
Yeah, and enforce, and all through the time.
The whole property rights thing of, is my backyard tree, then it's gone, staff doesn't know where it's gone to, and then how do you enforce that?
It's always the old example of it fell over, you know, the tree just died.
Yeah.
Geez.
Beaver attack.
Exactly.
But with developers, there's always steps in the development process that we can double check with them. That's why it's easier to regulate with developers.
Doesn't this also pertain to the issue of how many docks can be put on a property? That's where we encountered this recently.
With regard to Hawk's point, you mean?
Mm-hmm.
Right, and that's, I think, having a way to memorialize this within the property record as well. Because, I mean, we have great staff reports, and they're very useful, and we review them quite often. We look back at what was done in the past. But, and we get a very lengthy document of, say, 100 pages of a development agreement or something like that. It's a lot easier to go to a property record and recall the specific documents that have limits on those properties, and enforce those, it's a little more easy to manage. Also, we now have digital permitting systems, so we have what's called an electronic permit. So you can go and you can log it in, you can put little notes on there that tell you, you need to check up on this in one year, that the condition needs permit is a yearly permit, and that you need to count the cars, or check the fence, or whatever it is. So that's a big help as well. And they'll obviously utilize those technologies in the future to help alleviate some of these issues.
I think the only way this really is adhered to is if there's a penalty. And it's a stiff penalty, and it's very easily found.
Right, right. I think also it's just trying to find what's an effective penalty, and then making sure that the effectiveness is also correlates to the reasonableness as well, so that the punishment fits the crime. You know, one argument would be that for every tree you top down, it's $10,000 or something, because that would stop people from chopping down trees. But does that penalty fit that crime?
But it, it's as much an education process.
Right, yes.
Right, I'm not so sure that everybody around town who's cutting down trees is doing so with malicious intent. I think, it wouldn't surprise me if you took a survey of, pretty high percentage of people would be surprised to hear that if they've got a tree in their backyard that's dying, that they can't just cut that down.
Right, I think this piggybacks onto that conversation, that we spent, I think, an hour and a half in the last meeting for the lakes and water quality, talking about educational materials. And so we have like this one letter pamphlets that we're looking at. Looking at a full little help bird's guide to lakes and water quality agencies that you can flip to. There's a one pager on every lakes and water agency that a person can read, talking about our website, having a mailer go out, so that people that own lakes perhaps would get mailers. New residence guides would also be something to take a look at as well, because if you're new, you don't know.
There's also a tremendous number of people that come knocking on the door and happy to cut your trees down.
Mm-hmm, right.
And give you red.
And, you know, and, you know, if you're, the average homeowner is assuming that, you know, whether you're hiring a plumber or an electrician, or someone who's going to cut your trees down, that they're aware of the requirements, you know, whether it's permitting or whatnot in the city.
Right.
You know, how do you, how do you manage that? How do you, you know, how do you enforce that?
Not that I'm recommending an additional layer of bureaucracy, which I would never do. In Falcon Heights, we had to license our arborists and our tree removal specialists, and so they had to sign a document, and we gave them a copy of our requirements, and they took them wherever they went to go chop down trees. Of course, not every resident knows that you need to be licensed necessarily, so you could have an education.
I think that, you know, that education is half of the, half of the solution to this one. It can't be, you know, just higher penalties in a... All right, move on to item number three. This one seems to me really straightforward.
Don't we have some sort of caveats for the process of preventing erosion on construction sites?
State building code requires it.
Exactly.
But I think this is, this is talking about, you know, if you got a 40-acre site,
Right.
and the whole plaque gets approved for the 40 acres, but it, you know, it starts with a third of the site that goes under construction, right, to build the first few homes, and the rest of the land is sitting... I think that's what this is getting at, right? It's sitting...
It stays agricultural use.
There's runoff, it becomes something unmanaged, and is that?
I think that's a very close, yeah, definition what's going on, I think.
And I think it's difficult, if it continues to be, a lot of times, it's continuing to be farmed. You don't see too many farmers giving up money and letting property go vacant.
Even after it's rezoned?
Right, well, if they're doing it in phases, they'll lease out that phase that's not being developed for agriculture purposes still.
Okay.
Because it's a money-making property. And, but if it does go vacant, yeah, then there should be some type of Minniac Creek Watershed District or something involved, making sure that it isn't being run off into the lakes.
That's a dumb question. Is this just another layer to using your point, bureaucracy, and stuff has already been duplicated and covered in every other ordinance we already have?
Well, I mean, I don't want to step on too many toes here, but I think that there, I think one of the questions that the lakes and water quality commission, committee have is, are they duplicating some of this stuff? And to get kind of feedback to the point of, yeah, I think they might be. Some of the issues is that, you know, some of the stuff the city has the capacity to maybe take a look at. Some of these other things are kind of beyond the scope of the city's purview. Some of the agricultural uses can be outside, there's some state statutes that protect those sorts of activities. And so obviously, we wouldn't want to tread on those as well. But I think we're just trying to kind of tease out, you know, where there's enhancements are possible versus where I think we already have pretty good grasp on where things are as is, and for them to kind of hear that from the commission and the council.
And I also would add staff as well. Our plan is to get the comments from the planning commission and the city council, and then add our comments as well. Talk about what things are being addressed, and what do we need, what we would recommend, including. Paul did a really good job of going through the different jurisdictions, agencies, and what they review, like Minniac Creek Watershed District, the DNR, and the Corps of Engineers. And because there's a lot of agency overlap in the city, and then put that together, and for the Lake and Water Quality Board, and for all new commissioners too. This can be very helpful.
Yeah, so to John's point, like, number three, for example. I could imagine, what I appreciate about this process is that I could imagine that with a little bit of homework, staff might realize that, no, we actually have this covered. But with, but with feedback from the commission stating, yeah, this is pretty straightforward, this is important, and now being that sort of the forefront, when that next development comes through from a staff perspective, you're likely to engage in those conversations early with the developer, that this is something you need to plan for. And it's going to be discussed among the planning commission, and as this process goes forward. And so it's a point of emphasis in some ways. So even if it gets pulled off this list as we go forward, as maybe this doesn't require a lot of attention or change the ordinances, having some agreement around whether we agree it's important or not is, I think, a good step in the right direction.
Are there any things contained in this list of suggestions that could be included in the comp plan? Because as we consider developments, we look at the comp plan to see if the plans...
Well, I think this is, this is trying to get, I think you'd one step ahead of that, which is adjusting the ordinances, right?
I was trying to skip a step, I guess, to say that there maybe is another way to handle these issues.
Well, although adding it to the comp plan, then the next step is to update the ordinances to align with the comp plan. So it could be a little, could be a little bit of both.
You're right.
Well, I think as you read the recommendations and priorities, you might notice a bit of a theme between philosophical thought and more concrete thought. So like on some, you'll see this idea of should be better or equal to... Those are words that typically you don't use in law, but you use in philosophy, of trying to figure out what things should be, as opposed to cash for trees should be eliminated. Like, that's pretty straightforward, that's an ask, like, we should do that. And so there's kind of this narrative kind of weaves in and out of philosophy and practicum. And as it's going, what the recommendations and feedback is, what's happening is it's kind of narrowing the focus of the group as well, the lakes and water quality, to kind of hone in on where the focus should be, and where that philosophy can start turning into some recommendations for action, you know, as they develop more of a consistent cohesive message in their organization. Because they're brand new, I mean, a planning commission, statutorily, it's very straightforward of what this commission does, on top of some of the extra things that it does. Whereas the lakes and water quality, it's a little more nebulous. You know, what exactly do they do? We know they do lakes and water quality, it's in the name, but how does that take place? How does that action manifest itself? And so this is an attempt to try to take that manifestation and organize it. So at some points, it might seem very clear, and other points, it might seem like, where are we going with this? And so I think some answers will be a lot easier to make than others.
It sounds like they're just an ally, that's really trying to help you with, call it reminders.
Right. I think so, I mean, I don't, it's a, it's a committee of people, there's going to give recommendations. I mean, it's also trying to bridge that community-based and then professional-based approaches to planning as well. Obviously, the planning commission has a lot to do with that, but, you know, their thought is that, I don't want to speak too much for them, but I think their thought is that they specialize in a very specific area of the city, which is also a big part of the city as well, it's the city of, you know, lakes as well. And so it's trying to build that bridge and that gap, so that when they make a recommendation, I can be knowledgeable about what's going on as well. Because I, and living in Albuquerque, there's not a whole lot of water. So docks was challenging, and lakes is also kind of challenging.
Yeah, I think they add expertise, just, you know, based on the group that's been selected with a more narrow focus. So let's keep moving through these. Item four, it feels like when we were talking about item two, we started to blend in item number four. I'll, I'll share that how to enforce that becomes difficult. I mean, as an example, if, as a shoreline owner, you cut down all the 50-foot tall trees to open up your view corridor, and you can't put back 50-foot tall trees. You can make them put back 10-foot tall trees, but it doesn't seem like that big of a deal. If your intent was to get your view corridor opened up, and your penalty is to, you know, put back a few 10-foot trees in place of all the, those that were obstructing your view, as a homeowner, you've kind of won in that scenario.
Right.
Do you guys have concerns with how, I mean, how you might impose returning a site back to its original condition?
I don't, I don't see how you'd do it any other way. I mean, yeah, there's going to be people that want the view corridor, but how else do you penalize somebody? What matters? They're not going to attend a seminar.
Yeah, they're not going to read an ordinance either.
Yeah.
I don't care, that's going to happen no matter what. I mean, it's not just trees either, it's landscaping, grass, you know, they're mowing their lawns now down to the lake. That's what causes a lot of the pollution. Natural buffers are gone, and who knows what it looked like before they started? I mean, you go on a GIS site for Hennepin County, and they're 10, 11, 12 years old most of the time. So we don't even know what the properties look like, unless you visit it before the work was done and after.
I think also the knowledge that they're gonna, the trees that are on site, the vegetation that's there, isn't just for the benefit of the city to say that we have a lot of vegetation. It's for their benefit, because if they're on a slope, or if they're on a place where there's water runoff, they're going to reap, or sow what they've, you know, reap what they've sowed, as far as removing that. And it's not going to be to their benefit. They'll have a great view, but they'll have other issues, education perhaps.
And I hate to make excuses, but this is very difficult to enforce, to the point where, when developments come along, and the city is wise, and they put in a strip, like a 25, 30-foot strip, and along a lake, and say that's a city-owned outlet, there's still property owners that go and go into city-owned property, remove vegetation, and it's very difficult to get Carver County sheriffs to go out and issue citations, even for something like that. So even when the city owns the property, enforcing is difficult.
We see it in our community in Lake Wasserman, we see it on Watermark, it's just, Elzer Pond, it's just common stuff that we deal with.
Right.
And your building officials can issue citations too, but it's such a process. I mean, for the court and everything, I've been through, and it's...
and usually don't win anyway because they go to the private property rules and it, it's a tough fight. It's a real tough fight, especially if it's a minor infraction.
I just already see the hypothetical situation where I'm asking my building official to go down and cite for trees and they're going, excuse me? Doing what?
In some places, and I'm thinking of the town I live in on Cape Cod, many of the properties have conservation easements. You can't do a thing in that area unless it's approved. And is there any way that, you talk about a twenty-five-foot strip that the city owns, we don't need to do that. If we can enforce a con, force the developer to have a conservation easement on the shoreline.
But having the city own the property is probably the best way to ensure that the trees aren't being removed. Conservation easement is, is on the property and there's some requirements on that, but then you have to enforce that easement. But it's private property. If it's city-owned property, it's a lot easier to give a, a citation for somebody to go in there and remove a city property.
Well, I personally would not, I'd think twice about buying a lot that the city owned some of, or they wouldn't, I wouldn't be buying that, but like the city owned my view or something.
All right, how about four point two? I'm calling it four point two.
Four point two, that's a catch for trees.
The, the second number four, tree protection should be enhanced in shoreline zones.
I think that's almost impossible. So Jeff has a wooded lot. You own, let's say you own three hundred feet of shoreline that's heavily wooded. Is it no longer developable? Because you can't put in a building pad? Because you have to remove trees?
And I, I just see these questions coming from after the fifth one, and I thought about this. And it's not a negative thing I'm gonna say, but it's a little self-serving because these are people that have already developed their land and taken down their trees and cut their grass and added their landscaping. This isn't for new people moving in. This is to restrict new people moving in. But what they have right now is what they want.
Correct.
So when they get a tree they wanna cut down, what's gonna happen? And there's, their lots are probably the way they want them right now and wanna live the rest of the way. And they want everyone else's lot to stay the way, especially that new guy coming in with his eye on that big tree. So it's a little, it leans a little that way, but I understand it because their experience with the lake is that they do see that happen. And that's kind of where this comes from. And that, it's a little unfair to restrict anything more than a general ordinance, to make any one ordinance extremely rash as far as a tree or landscape or.
I think your comments are well pointed and I appreciate their, this organization's effort, their thought process through it. It does a lot of wonderful things to the community, but I think it's redundant and duplicated. And it really makes it difficult for the current viewer wanting to do things new and exciting as far as development. It makes it, especially this, I think, four point two, it just doesn't make sense. You got an oak tree in the middle of a lot.
What is the cash for trees? What's that all about?
So it's like the development's gonna be happening up here. They can't replace enough trees to satisfy the tree replacement.
Oh.
So they can pay for each tree and deal of that.
Right, 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 right.
So that, that's, and it goes into a fund for trees.
So what's interesting is I see, in some ways, four point two is linked to item one. Right, that, I mean, one scenario is as they state, you know, eliminate the, the cash for tree option. But in a, in another scenario, if you're, if you're leveraging the PUD process properly and there's a stand of trees that's of high, high value, then let the PUD process sort of recognize the value of trees in that zone and those of more or less value and sort of have a collaborative process around what the alternative is. Rather than treating all trees equally and cutting them all down or, you know, protect the areas that, that are actually more important and current, you know, cluster building on the development and, you know, but that all comes through a collaborative process that sort of starts with identifying what's valuable and.
I'm gonna suggest that all these things are already in place. We just aren't exactly enforcing them. Every one of us has driven sixty-five miles an hour down that fifty-five mile zone. We're just not always caught. I think a lot of the stuff that we're looking at here is stuff we've already reviewed and talked about over the last couple of years with the new ordinances. I don't see anything new and, new and different. I like what they're talking about, like the direction they're going. I think the ordinances we already have in place cover a lot of this. I appreciate their efforts.
I think that the pamphlets that they're talking about informing the new people, informing everyone, that's, I think, the key. As you say, we have the ordinances.
I think we do, but I could be wrong. There's probably some enhancements to some of the stuff.
But we need to inform the guy when he buys his lot.
Yep.
Or the woman.
Education, yeah.
So let's, let's touch on, we just got a couple left. So four point three, wetlands are especially important in shoreline zones. Just one quick thought I have in that is that oftentimes when we're evaluating the displacement of wetlands, it's because there isn't necessarily another spot on, on that same site, right? So some of the complexity comes in. This seems to have more of a holistic view if you're displacing wetlands, but it gets more complicated when it's not always within that site that the opportunity to take that approach.
And isn't this something that is a process of the Watershed District and the DNR themselves also too? The city really doesn't mitigate the wetland. It's designed by others, other entities.
The water districts approve any mitigation. And they approve any location of new wetlands replacement.
Yeah, so that, that's.
This isn't up to the city.
Yep, correct, so.
They're quite strict.
Very.
All right, item four point four on the next page. Shoreline ordinance as well as infrastructure planning should address the need for buffers.
We have.
Yeah, it, do you guys have some context in terms of something in particular in the shoreline zone that should be viewing buffers differently than maybe what we do?
I, I think the context of this was Highway seven up near Zumbra and Sunny. I think it's because there's concern about degradation of that kind of bluffish area and that we don't get sediments and other types of washout going into those lakes. I think another one, it's not in Victoria, but I think it's like Christmas Lake. It's also really close to the Highway seven. I guess the other issue is like, I don't know how you, how you necessarily enforce state highway buffer.
Yeah, you're not gonna, you're not gonna move Highway seven.
Right.
Move the highway or you move the lake. Or, you know, you're sort of, if, if creating separation, that, that would be the challenge in that instance, right? Like, they, those two entities exist today and so any, any sort of treatment is likely to impact both.
Right, and we could take this future-wise and go into, say, like Pearson's Lake or, even though it's, even a little bit difficult there too, because it's already kind of built. There's, the lake area has development on it. And so maybe we're looking at upgrading infrastructure that we take a closer look at. But then again, engineering, I wanna treat this with respect, obviously, but like engineering has standards that they have to maintain and that usually includes certain requirements and certain considerations. Now, can those be enhanced above and beyond? I, I don't know. That's beyond my knowledge. Obviously, we can have our engineers weigh in on this issue as well, but my assumption is that they do a pretty good job. But if there are areas to be enhanced, then we can always take a look at that.
Don't they require, I know they require environmental impact studies.
Correct.
For any highway building.
Typically, we don't do this in isolation. This is done as a collaborative, multi-jurisdictional effort. And so not only, there's many sets of eyes on a project, but also I think maybe this has to do with maybe more education as well. Just maybe having a quick one-pager that explains kind of the process and then if anybody has questions about it, they can easily access that information. Engineering standards can be a little laborious.
Like, what's a buffer? Is, is a buffer something different than what we assume, you know?
Right. Well, I mean, for like certain utilities for water and sewer, for example, they have to be of a certain distance between each other first and foremost. And I know they have to be a certain distance from a water source and also some sort of infiltration requirements, whether the water, whether it's water table or other things. I mean, also there's insulation requirements, so they have to be so deep. And then it goes on and on. Again, I'm not a PE. I don't know the details. But going back to my physical foundations of land use planning, that's what I can remember.
Okay, how about item number seven? Full cutoff streetlights.
The idea of a streetlight is to provide safety and illumination. To cut it off, to have it coned or straight piled as a, as a spotlight is pointless. To be shaded towards the lakeside, you have an argument. I mean, we can definitely have a, a streetlight that achieves that. But the idea is to get it spread out as far as you can for the safety of the, the people on the road. It's not to worry about if someone across the lake can see it.
I think one of the things that they had mentioned that wasn't in here was like, there's these types of lights where they're, they have high dispersal, but they're also, the, not the lumens, but like it's sharp impact can be negated because of how it disperses the light.
Sure.
And so it softens as it goes out.
And with the advent of all LED street lighting.
Right.
It's much more easy to regulate that.
Right.
I mean, that, that's a technology thing more than an ordinance type thing.
Right.
You can have that language within an ordinance and the highest technology with the most amount of shading towards the lake, but that's about all you can do.
This was also an Excel question as well, since they provide our, most of our lighting.
All right, item number ten. Shared access lots.
I think that's already covered based upon our recent Hawks Point.
So this is two items that this invokes, is memories of Hawks Point is one, but also the water, not Watermark, Waterford Landing.
On the north end of Schutz Lake?
Correct.
Mm-hmm.
And so there was discussion, lively, active discussion amongst many of the members regarding many lots getting access to one lake through a shared lot. And some people see that as a good process that led to a okay solution versus some who do not like that concept whatsoever. And so I think this is a, a part of that situation. Obviously, like, private marinas tend to be problematic to some degree, just because of the Hawks Point situation. Neighbors start to catch on that you're gonna operate out of there and so they don't want it next to their house. But I think a lot of our, at least when we're talking about lakes that are within, wholly within the city, I don't think that's allowed anymore unless you do it under a PUD, which is something that multiple bodies review and we have open hearings.
And, and we had restrictions on the one on North Side of Schutz Lake too, is that one dock and no more, two more boats at any given time, so.
Yeah.
It's hardly a marina. I'll guarantee you, most people on that lake have two boats on their dock.
Right.
As far as use goes, I don't think you saw any great increase of use because it's, that lake is really for the people that live on it anyway. You don't get a lot of hot sage traffic anymore.
I got a quick lesson on the oral history of Schutz Lake. And everything that's happened down there. And the fact, like, one thing that was brought to my attention is there isn't a public access to that lake.
Not anymore.
Right. And so, you know, one thought was that, well, if, maybe we can just get rid of that question by talking to the Three Rivers Park District and getting a public access. Making it open to the public and therefore you make these sorts of issues sort of moot because anybody can go in the lake. The issue is that they have no way of really getting a boat on the lake except through that one access.
And then how do you define a lot? I mean, the Hawks Point, define lots. You got definitive lots.
Right.
The Schutz Lake project? Technically, it's a lot the association owns and as a member of that association, you get to use that given lot that's all common interest to the community.
Right.
Remember that development well. We had lots of conversation around it.
And also in all these suggestions, I wanna make sure to always honor the process. Process, went through the process, the, the bodies had their opportunity to make comments and then the council made a decision. And we have to honor those things. Doesn't mean that we can't talk about it and be reflective about the process, but it happened. It's to be honored. But I think looking forward, I mean, their specific remedy would be, don't do it again. But I don't know necessarily the environmental impact of that. So for example, if you're taking, again, being respectful, if you're taking thirty docks off of a lake and putting one on it instead and limiting it to two pontoons, what is your, what's the net effect of that? Well, you have far less congestion on the lake, argumentatively. And is that a success model or is that, or is that a broken model? I, I don't know. To me, it sounds like having two boats is less than having ten boats.
Well, and, and you don't have multiple riparian lots with lot, lots of activity and instead it's a, you know, it's a common, uh, common area.
Right.
That is, you know.
Plus, if I remember right, that could have been four individual lots that would have been four docks and eight more boats. Well, that was a heck of a compromise to put that shared marina down there if you have.
Right. And if I was a developer, I'd try making flag lots to the lake. So everyone has like ten feet. Yet I have a full front of my lot, so it's a legal lot. In most districts, that would be considered legal. So that seemed like a amicable solution.
So, so what's hard about that discussion is that depending on if, you know, it's happening on your lake and you live on that lake and have an opinion about what the best solution is or having an objective view, it's not your lake, it's, you know, truly trying to have the best of intentions and from a natural resources standpoint, your added, your position will likely be different in terms of what, what's really best for, for a particular development or a particular lake. Go on to eleven?
Let's do it.
On our, on our items of ten, there's an eleven. Notice.
Bonus, yeah, bonus number eleven.
It goes to eleven, man.
Well, that's very appropriate because we're talking about noise.
Yeah, there we go. Spinal tap, right on.
Where did five go and six?
That's four, two point one, two point two.
They're all sub fours.
So the noise ordinance that is different around shoreline areas. Any thoughts on that?
I'm thinking how you can enforce it.
Impossible.
Well, a permit. I mean, if there's a, you know, a little small shindig and.
And they do, they have permits available for that for noise ordinance. The bars get them when they have special bans and tell them, but to restrict someone to say, well, you can't have a jet boat because you're on the lake or your lawnmower is too loud. The police aren't gonna run around and try to learn three different noise ordinances within a city. You know, they're, well, they're gonna go on a complaint basis. If they get there and do their decibel meter, find that there is an obstruction, that's gonna be a ticket. But gee, do I give a shoreline ticket? Do I give, how do I zone this ticket? Or how do I write it up under which? Another unenforceable thing, which I understand they're on the lake. They like the tranquility, but once again, it only serves the people on the lake. And that's not always right when you, when you're writing ordinance.
Now, as it exists today, if, if your neighbor is playing music too loud or has a band playing outside, there's mechanisms in place to complain about that.
Right. Right, you call the sheriff and they'd come down and say, quiet up. If they do it again, probably get a ticket. I used to play in a band in the garage and that's what we got. Stern, stern talking to. And then usually we wait until they leave, do another ten minutes and then turn it off.
And, and there were several times when they issued extra noise ordinance or late noise permits to Lois when she owned Floyd's Bar. And they would come and check with a decibel meter. They'd stand across the street and check to see what her decibels were to see if she is within the prescribed limit. And if she wasn't, they'd go and shut them down. And that's an effective way and that's the only way to do it is keep it consistent. So at least the people enforcing it have a, a pattern and a, a system to go by, not, not a bunch of different ones. So it, it looks nice and, you know, it sounds nice, but it just can't, can't be.
So, good work, good perspective. I think there's some expertise that will lead to some good conversations going forward.
It, I'm hoping it leans towards education, getting this information out there, especially the concern about the lakeshore and how they're being degraded by tree removal. It, I hope it leans towards education, uh, getting this information out there, especially the concern about the lakeshore and how they're being degraded by tree removal and everything. That's gotta be a forefront. I mean, that, that's what opens people's eyes is when they see it uh, in front of them, not when they make the mistake and cut down the tree. Then, then it's enforcement.
I mean, you, you might have the same landowner that is really frustrated with the. With the green water in the lake, but then at the same time is um.
Cutting the tree down.
Degra, cutting down the trees and degrading the waterfront and, you know, could some education sort of close the gap there?
Using the Roundup to kill the Mill Foil.
And the neighbors.
Exactly.
Is that good for feedback? Did anybody have any last comments?
Mm-mm.
I think that's good.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you to the committee. Uh, moving on, last item for discussion tonight is four vacant lots.
Mister Chair, I need to recuse myself from this topic, cause I may have a conflict.
Appreciate that. Um, we'll continue the discussion without you. Who's gonna, who's gonna walk us through this one? Pat?
I will. So, a couple of weeks ago, uh, Public Works told me about a lot that is on Smithtown. Pro, uh, road and asked us if we wanted to sell it. And they went ahead and told me that a lot of the property owners nearby. Store boats and equipment on the lot. It's a city-owned lot, but we don't use it as a park. And they would rather just sell it. The, that got us talking about some other lots that the city owns that would like to sell off. Uh, so that there's four lots. The first one's at sixty-three thirty-five Smithtown Road, uh, sixty-three seventy Maple Drive, eighty-four twenty County Road eleven. And then the northwest corner of eighty-first Street and Trillium. The one on Smithtown Road is on the screen and the city tried to um, sell this back in two thousand and six. Planning Commission and the Park and Rec Commission at the time, uh, thought it was a good idea to sell it, uh, because it's not being used as a park. But after having a, an open house with the neighborhood, uh, the Park and Rec Commission decided not to sell it at that time. The park director um, has since recommended selling it again and talked to the Park and, uh, Park and Rec Commission last night. And they agreed to sell in it with the condition that any proceeds from the sale would go to the, the parks. Um, this is guided in our comprehensive plan two thousand and forty for green space. But that it'd be something that the city council can easily change over the next few months if they decided that a single-family residence is a more appropriate use for the site. One of the reasons I should back up is the reason why we're bringing this to the planning commission in the first place, is cause it's by state law, anytime the city sells property. You have to bring it in front of the city, the planning commission to make sure it's consistent with the comprehensive plan. And that's what we're doing tonight. So this one, um, it could be, i- it's not consistent with the two thousand and forty comprehensive plan, but it easily could be by. Uh, the city council changing that to a single-family residence or low-density residential.
Could you explain one thing? Smithtown Road is the road that goes from down here up there, right?
North.
What is this?
Smithtown Road goes this way and then this road is.
Highway seven?
No, it's just a north of Highway seven. So Highway seven is to the south. I can look it up if you'd wish.
So I'm gonna help you, I'm here, Joe. This is Smithtown Road, this way?
Uh, this way.
Highway seven's over here. Um, and this is like Lake Virginia Shores.
That's it.
Are you, are you interested in talking about these as we go, Pat?
If you want, otherwise I can go through them all.
Just really quick, this site, um, I'm surprised that it's, it's developable as a single family. I'm familiar with this area, you know, I remember when the park went in. There's a large hill between the park and this property. In fact, most of the property is, is quite a bit in elevation.
It's like a roller coaster right there, it starts going.
Steep slope.
Yeah, I would say more than half of this site that's highlighted in orange is, is. Pretty steep. And then the only other two thoughts is that, um, you know, there's an active park there. Um, right now, that, that large mound serves as a buffer to the neighborhood. You know, all of a sudden for that to be graded and converted to a single-family lot seems like. Not ideal. And also, those, those woods there, um, there's trails in there. Kids run around and, and play in, in those woods, you know, so it's sort of like a, a different. Uh, level of, of activity adjacent to the, you know, what is the open and active park.
Natural park.
Yeah. There's forts in the woods and tra, and little trails and.
So one question on the yellow area, so sixty-seven thirty-five. If you go to the Carver County G I S site, it's just that small chunk.
Correct.
Why are we highlighting the whole big chunk? We're just looking at that little chunk, right?
Not necessarily. Um, so what we would look at, so the, the entire intent is um, to bring these four to the planning commission and city council. To have the city council then direct staff to most likely to hire a realtor to go out there and to figure out what the best use of those properties are, what the price would be. Uh, where the houses would sit. Um, this one, I would imagine that the house would be located. Uh, closer to that existing single-family house at seven forty-five. So you do a lot split and then the orange would be one large lot. Um, there's some utilities in that um, sixty thirty-five lot already. And that's why we're looking at maybe that it's possible to have the house on the other side.
So what you're going to do is you're gonna split sixty-seven forty-five and make it a larger.
Correct.
So you're gonna make it the three-quarter acre as opposed to the sixty-seven thirty-five is point two.
Right.
Point two-five.
Right, it'd be a larger lot.
Okay, so what, what you're doing is actually asking us to uh, pass on a yes or a no to. Split sixty-seven forty-five and make it one large lot. Not just sixty-seven thirty-five.
Not yet. What we'd like to do is um, just say that this land use is consistent with the comprehensive plan. Then what we would do is work with the realtor and then also work with the um, neighborhood to make sure that everybody is aware of what we're doing. And then we have, you know, all of our information before we bring it back to the city council and to do a lot split and to sell the property.
So we could say it's, it is in line with comprehensive plan, but as it sits, it's not buildable size-wise or.
Well, and currently this is zoned park, right? You said this isn't.
It's guided for open space.
Right.
Right.
Where's the closest park?
Well, the closest park is right above the hill.
Six-seven four-five. Tennis court and.
Well, outside of that one.
Yeah, it's a. There's nothing readily available, I mean, until you go quite a ways east on Highway seven. Or come towards Victoria. Or, you know, the downtown.
So one thing that I kinda teed this up to the planning commission, I separated these four, um, and I separated this one away from the other three. Cause I think this one, to me, is more of a decision by the Park and Rec Commission. And to decide if, do they need that spot or that space for a, a park or not. And what I'm recommending the planning commission to do is to let that, the Park and Rec Commission make that decision. And if they make that decision, then the planning commission would say, yeah, that's consistent with the comprehensive plan to have this a single-family residence, if that's their decision. And then the other three would, I think are easier, um, because they're not being used for parks, they're just open space that we're maintaining.
Do we wanna go to the other three or?
Sure.
Are we hung up here, so?
So this one, apparently it's um, sixty-three seventy Maple Drive. It is a platted lot. Apparently, what I've been told, it was part of a, a affordable housing. Project? That's not the best word, but. In that there was two lots that were dedicated for affordable housing, this one and an, and another one. The city's already sold the other one and I don't know what year they sold it. Um, but this one is, is sitting vacant and we're paying taxes on it. So this one, I think, is the easiest of the four to sell. Um, it's a plaid a lot.
And this is zoned R one?
Yes.
We're short of our square footage required for an R one lot of twelve thousand square feet. We're only at ten, eight, nine, zero.
It's zoned P U D.
So it's in a P U D and, and there's lots of that size or smaller within the P U D?
I'd have to check, but it is a plaid a lot, so it was, it was approved as a.
As the, as a buildable lot.
Right.
Okay, through the P U D.
Correct.
Okay.
The third one, um, this one is off County Road eleven, Victoria Drive, and it used to be where the wa, old water tower sits. So, again, the, the public works doesn't need this site. Um, we maintain it, mow it, but it's just a, a kind of a waste of resource. So we, we'd like to investigate selling it. Again, we'd wanna get a higher realtor to figure out like, um. What we would get um, to, to sell it. And then also figure out how much would it cost to re, remove the concrete from the water tower. So we, until we hire a realtor to do that investigation for us, um, we really can't do anything right now.
And, and the driveway being a county opening, that opening stays, so we don't have to worry about that.
Correct. And then the last one is on northwest corner of eighty-first Street and Trillium. Uh, it's a large lot. Uh, there's a little access to the west that somebody is already using over the lot, so we'd have to work something out with that property owner. To make sure that they're maintaining it, maybe it's a lot split and we're giving some of that property up. But it's a remnant piece, I believe, from a, a road project. Again, hasn't been looked at selling. And again, with all of these, we would notify the neighbors again and, you know, each one of these at different times, uh, to like get them a heads up of what our intents are, tensions.
And that one, that one easily makes it fifteen thousand square feet and R one.
Right, it's very large.
And that's, that's been, yeah, empty for a while. Thirty-plus years.
That one's zoned R one. Um, again, it's um, guided for single-family residential in the comp plan as well.
It's right downtown here basically behind the, the gas station at the end of the road before you go into. Remember the name of the development back there?
Is it Watermark?
No, uh, the old one. Anyway, it's, it's just a dirt lot right now. And actually that trail, Trillium Trail is one of our last dirt roads or dri, dirt trails. That's not paved at all. Nor wide enough for a legal street, I would guess. It's basically an alley to those properties. Except the two on the eighty twenty-four and the other one.
Is this site quite? Uh, does this have an elevation to?
It slopes a little bit eighty-first, but not a, not unbuildable or, or crazy slope to it.
It'd actually be perfect for a walkout. So what that staff has recommended, that the planning commission. Makes a finding that the three lots are consistent with the comprehensive plan, last three lots, and then that the lot at uh, Smithtown is. Consistent if the Park and Rec Commission deems that it's not needed for a park.
My only feedback. Is the uh, Maple Drive property, because when it was originally sold um, for affordable housing. It would sure would be great if someone like Habitat could have first sh, first crack at it, you know? We know that we don't have enough affordable housing in our community and if they can offer a fair price and it works with the development agreement. I, I think it'd be great to see.
That's a, that's a message you can forward.
Hmm.
To the council.
It's a good idea.
Yeah, it's a great idea. Are we in agreement that the three lots, I mean, does that sound reasonable that those are all within the comprehensive plan? What's the comprehensive plan? The three buildable lots?
Yeah, I think I'd agree with that. I, I appreciate your, some of your questions that you had, Todd, in terms of um. Terms of their lot size and consistency with adjacent properties and sort of the, the terms in which those developments were approved. And, you know, I think with the, with the first one. I know too much. That's part of like my, my perspective and sort of understanding how that park was developed and how the land has been. And the fact that it's zoned, has open space sort of in conjunction with that park. But yeah, I guess I'd be comfortable bumping it to the Park and Rec Committee to sort of evaluate the. The practicality of that, um, going forward, so. Any other questions or comments? You're actually looking for a motion on this tonight, right?
Yes.
Well, here it is.
All right, I'll go ahead and make a motion that we um. Approve the recommendation as presented, um, which includes the. Proposed use of the vacant lots located at sixty-three seventy Maple Drive, eighty-four twenty County Road eleven. The northwest corner of eighty-first Street and Trillium, a single-family residence is consistent with the comprehensive plan. And if the Park and Recreation Commission deems the lot at sixty-seven thirty-five Smithtown Road is not needed for a park, then. Still think the lot as a single-family residence is consistent with the comprehensive plan.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, moving on. Council meeting updates. March eleventh, February twenty-second were the last two.
They approved the Hawks Point P U D amendment. The, the council approved the docks ordinance. The parking study, um, they discussed the parking study and they uh, approved adopting the uh, planning commission's recommendations to include in the comp plan. Including the parking, that the uh, planning commission is now the steward of the parking issue. They also approved the issues permit for the Noble Lion. That little. Waiting room. Yeah, lion's den. They uh, discussed the Rolling Hills sketch plat, yeah, I think was pretty consistent with the recommendation of the planning commission. They discussed the metals and they agreed with the planning commission that the uh, water treatment plant should be on the north side of the railroad tracks. And that the s, uh, multifamily should not be located south of the railroad tracks. The developer is trying to work with a, a multifamily to put it north of the railroad tracks. Steep slopes. They, they talked about the steep slopes at this meeting. And they recommended the staff to meet with the developers and their attorneys, which we did in between the two meetings. And they are very close to approving the steep slope ordinance. We made some changes and the changes we, we made was one. To um, better define what steep slopes are, so we made a definition in there. And to um, say that the, the steep slope has to have a fall of at least ten feet. So if you had a eighteen percent slope that wa, had a fall of only six feet, that wouldn't be covered under it. So it had to be more of a significant. Steep slope essentially.
Good idea, makes sense.
Right.
Ten foot over eighteen percent would be what? About fifty-eight feet of travel?
Having that distance is helpful.
Right.
Yeah, so far, sixty feet, yeah.
Um, and they also wanted to include some language that a P U D would be able. Flexible with development, essentially. And then on March eleventh. They uh, discussed the establishment of the TIF public hearing for April twenty-second city council meeting. And then they talked about the steep. And then they talked about the steep slopes for a, a bit, that's it.
Thank you. Moving on then to miscellaneous. Anybody have anything?
I have a little bit. I think as planning commission, there's one thing that we can do, and that is recommend certain things that could be done to make our city prettier. And, as, for instance, um, we could recommend, or prettier and also, well, I, I'd love to see community gardens somewhere. We have so many apartment buildings now, there must be people who would love to have a little plot of land until, and I think of the gardens that they have entering Excelsior on Smithtown Road. And I think that the city could do some research as to how to, what they have to do, find out how, how it's done in other communities. And I, I think that would be a good addition, and at one point, uh, one of the men at that meeting I went to for businesses.
The B B O.
Recommended, recommended the property, I guess it's just adjacent to the brewery there, going east.
There is a.
It can't be behind the Dodge place, because that's wetlands.
There is a piece.
Yeah.
East of the Inky Building and north of the Dodge dealership that is owned by the city.
Oh, it is, even better.
Contemplated cleaning that up.
Even better, good. And I, I just, I think, for instance, we could en, enhance the sign coming into Victoria along Route five. It's blah, the plantings are blah, we need color. And anyway, I just would request that we all, as we go around our city, think of what could we do to make it more outstanding for the people who are fl, driving through so fast. You know, what, how will they remember? I also would love to see hanging baskets on the light posts instead of banners, things like this, and that involves city council budgeting money. But if the plan commission could at some time, when we have time, not like tonight, come up with a, maybe a recommendation as to what we could do, what the city could do. And just, I'll put in one other plug. We don't have a garden club. If we did, we would have women and men out there beautifying our city. So we, it needs to come from somewhere. That's all. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Love that idea, thank you. I, um, love Adalias, and my, my house now doesn't have enough sunshine, and I've complained about not having a community garden, so I think that'd be great.
Well, there you go. Head her up. Join the lines and start a program.
Good, anything else tonight?
I have, uh, one item to share, um, we held a public meeting just before this one on the Arbor Woods development issue, and that's been an ongoing issue, um, that we've presented here. I think we have consensus. We discussed the different options, um, particularly the R one zone for that particular area, to bring that to the impervious surface standard, and we got a lot of feedback, a lot of positive feedback. Um, there's still be one lot that would be in non-conformance, and I think that would be something that we would talk to that particular person to see how we can come to a, a very mutual agreement, so that they're not put in a really difficult situation. I think that was a concern from our last conversation. Um, we looked at each lot, and it looks like, um, they all fall within about thirty percent, a little bit less, a little bit more, depends. And that, um, an R one thirty-five percent would solve a lot of the issues, and I think the folks that were there today felt positive about that solution, so we'll hopefully bring something to you shortly.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Is there anything new to share on the thirteen and a half acre development?
So we met with the developer yesterday, and, um, they're gonna ask for like a two-week extension, because technically, their pre-let development agreement ends March twenty-sixth, and the next city council meeting is March twenty-fifth. So they're gonna be going to the city council, and just, they want two more weeks to figure out all the details. And then ha, come back on April eighth, city council meeting, to present the, their findings.
I thought your article was really good, I, I, um, I enjoyed it, and it, it brought home to me the, the growing concern I have of three-six thousand square feet of small shop space for that plan. Yeah.
I think they're, as a Cura article, Center for Urban and Regional Planning.
It was on my reading list this week.
It was about retail.
I see.
All right, anything else?
Nope.
I move that we adjourn. Is that second? All in favor?
Aye. Thank you, everybody.
Enjoy your evening.